With us. Hello. So I'm going to call the meeting of the Manzanita Planning Commission to Order. It's four oh one on Monday, February tenth, and this is our regular meeting time. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to have a full panel with us today. First order of business is comments from the public that are not on on issues other than what the what we're discussing today, the Manzanita Pines development. Scott, is Scott behind the scenes or are you running the meeting?
Well, I'm he's here, but he's on vacation, so I'm going to run the meeting.
Let me know if anybody's put up a hand to.
Yeah, I don't I don't see anyone right now.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. The next order of business is the approval of the January thirteen twenty twenty five minutes. I'm hoping that the commissioners have had the opportunity to read them, and I would be willing to make any notes about additions, corrections, spelling errors, anything that needs to be changed before we move to accept. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Shall move.
Thank you. Thanks, Lee. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, raise your hand or say aye. Okay, great, thank you very much. I always like having another set of documents to pop in at City Hall and sign, so thank you. Okay, any updates, Leila, that you want to give us, or do you want to postpone till the end of the meeting? It's up to you.
Yeah, nothing at the moment. Yep.
Okay.
Start things.
Did they? Cannot remember what they're called, the Advisory Committee that's working with the comp plan. Have they met?
The PASC.
Thank you.
I don't believe has met since our last planning commission meeting. We have a meeting coming up in about ten days, or about no, this time next week.
Okay.
Tuesday the eighteen.
We have one coming up. Clearly, I do not know the exact date.
Great.
Tuesday the eighteenth at ten AM.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make sure we have the record on that. Got more to more to look forward to from that group. Okay, the meat of the meeting today is our Manzanita Pines affordable housing project. I think that's the language we're still using for projects like this. And so who wants to, Scott, do you want to take it away, or Leila? Who's who's wants to take the lead on this?
So we'll start with the staff report, and Scott is going to handle that. And I trust you're going to need access to share your screen.
I would love to present, yes.
I would love you to present.
Well, enjoy the show, Leila. All right. It's great to be here again. Today I'm putting on not my comprehensive plan hat, but my current planning hat. And we're going to do a presentation on Manzanita Pines Planned Unit Development. Just a just a quick note here. Walt was the primary author of this staff report. I was involved with the review of this with both Scott and Walt and all the other agencies that we had to have review this. So just wanted to let you know that I am presenting this. I'm very familiar with the project. I've been involved with it since the beginning. But I didn't author the staff report, but I have been involved in in producing that. I'll share my screen now.
And Scott, I don't want to slow your roll, but cover the the plat issue now, or do you do you have later in the presentation?
I don't have it in the presentation, so thank you for bringing that up, Leila. So there were some questions that came up previous to the meeting about, well, how are we going to approve this without having a final, the final plat in place? So what happens is when when we do this, there's a preliminary plat that has to be approved. And essentially, there's different. I guess I would say, what am I looking for here? What's the word? Provisions that have to be in place for when when that plat is accepted. So it's at the it's needs to go through the county at the Cessar's office to be to be finalized. And so we're hoping that can be done in short order, so that process isn't taking place. And if necessary, what we can do is we can make that approval, the final plat, a condition of the approval of the planned unit development, if it comes down to that, just from a timing perspective. So that's how we're going to deal with that if it becomes an issue.
Yeah, and I'll just note to defer the record that the this was a more complicated process because of the required deed restriction on the twelve acres that were annexed into the city. So it took us a number of months working with the dip with the landowner to get agreement on that deed restriction. It was approved, and then the city has filed for annexation. I signed the plat on Friday, and it's my understanding it will be filed later this week. So those things are happening concurrently with each other right now. So just want to acknowledge why that took so long. And John, I got your question about two minutes before the meeting, so wanted to make sure we hit that right up front.
Can I ask another quick question? Or do you want me to wait till the end when we do our discussion?
I think if it's related to the plat, be happy to take it now, but.
It is. I was just wondering in the is the I guess what I'm asking is what's being platted? Is it just the piece that the twelve acres that has to do with the deed restriction? Or is a bigger piece of Highlands being platted that shows the Loop Road as an actual loop?
It includes the twelve acres and Loop Road. But I don't believe it exceeds the site.
No, it's three and it's three separate properties as well. So it was a division into three properties, includes all three properties that encompass the twelve acres total. The plat will not include the road until the PD is finalized. So after this plat occur, this plat will occur to do the division of the lots. Then, once the planned, the planned unit development will also create a plat which will have the road dedications in it as well, which will modify that once this is complete.
Okay. My, the reason I'm bringing this up now is because I'm pretty sure we talked about this in our preliminary, and there were several commissioners, and I was one of them, that did not want this development or the next two developments that hopefully will come along after to be sort of a stuck in the back piece and not connected to the bigger development.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that we get some sort of okey dokey from the development team at large that, you know, we're looking at this as a kind of a community sort of sort of thing, not just stuck back in that corner.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. You'll see, I'll show you the plat, the 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 design, the site plan, and it does show that quote unquote Loop Road that does connect.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it on any of the documentation that I've seen so far, so.
Well, hopefully we'll can show that to you, and it does Loop Road, and it does connect to both, and they will all be connected. So hopefully that alleviates that concern.
Thank you, Scott.
Sure. Okay, is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So unfortunately, this is not my style of presentation. I love pictures and graphs and all sorts of good information. This is going to be very text heavy. I'm going to be doing quite a bit of reading. I will try to do my best to paraphrase when I can, so that I'm not reading the entire staff report to you. However, I will be covering every piece of the staff report in this presentation. This is an important project. I think we need to go over all the details and make sure everyone understand understands exactly where we are. So it's about fifty three slides. It's probably going to take twenty minutes plus to go through this, maybe half an hour or so. I would, if there is clarification, questions as I'm going through, please raise your hand. If you think it's more efficient to kind of jot them down and ask them at the end, that would be fine too. But if there's something in the moment where we need that clarification, I'm totally open to that. So please feel free to interrupt me. So here we are. This is Manzanita Pines Plan Unit Development. You'll also hear me use PUD as an acronym for Planned Unit Development through the presentation. So the applicants, Keith Daly, I don't know if him or his group are on tonight today, but I assume we have representatives from the from the applicant team. We all know where this is, but it's on the north side of the Carney City Road. It's about five hundred feet west of the intersection of Clipper Court. There's no address currently. It has its tax lot fourteen oh one on the new plat map. This is just a map that I created, kind of showing the general area here. We talked about that road connection here going through. The idea is the road will connect through here, and you'll see that on the next plot plan. But in terms of the general area, this is the twelve acre property that's been identified.
Scott, real quick, it's my understanding that Loop Road actually isn't going to go all the way.
Doesn't come all the way down here.
Correct, it won't connect into there, but that eventually there will be a connection through the middle of the property. So the applicant is up, I just want to clarify that the neighborhood itself will be connected to itself.
Yes.
But that road as proposed is not connecting into the Highlands that the longer term vision is that will connect through a road through the middle of the property. And the applicant can address more of that in their presentation, but I just want to clarify.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
So yeah, it because it's only the northern part of the twelve acres, the road will only stop at the edge of that property for the current proposal. But the the proceeding proposal would have a connection to the south. So that was, thank you for clearing that clarifying that, Leila. And John, I apologize for making that statement in error. Parcel size, this, the parcel that we're looking at for this PUD is four point six acres out of that twelve we mentioned. It's vacant. It's has public water sanitary sewer sewer available. The zoning, as you likely know, the zoning was just recently changed to SRR, and it is not located within the dune overlay or floodplain overlay zone. So there's no floodplain or dune overlay that we have to deal with on this parcel. In terms of adjacent adjacent land uses, again, as you know, this parcel was recently brought into the urban growth boundary. The properties adjacent are outside of the urban growth boundary. Located to the south and southwest is R two residential property. And then also residential manufactured dwelling to the east. The properties, again, are outside the urban growth boundary. To the to the north is that commercial C one with a mix of different zones while S and the SRR zone is located to the northwest. The request is to build twenty affordable units, multifamily housing project. The ordinance that we're going to look at that are applicable to this project are the ninety five point four, section four point one three, which is the planned unit development criteria. And then the SRR zone, which is section three point oh three oh. I have a question here. Are we taking?
Not taking public comment yet. Defer to the chair on that, but.
He misspoke, he said twenty, he said twenty.
Yes, we have that, thank you. It's sixty units, which is what's on the screen.
Thank you for the clarification.
The chair will be the one to invite public comment, but thank you for pointing that out.
Karen, I will defer to you for all questions from now on.
Yeah, unless it's a question from the commissioner that is to clarify the point that you're making, let's hold all the comments and arguments until the end.
Thank you for that clarification. It is sixty units, not twenty units. I also mentioned this already, but we that part of this was the annexation of that twelve point five four acres, which is the plat we previously discussed. Again, the owner wants to construct city sixty units of affordable multifamily housing. So this site is going to going to consist of about five buildings. Two, two of those buildings will have twelve units. One will have nine units, one will have six units, and the largest of the five buildings will have twenty one units. So of these sixty units, there's going to be fourteen one bedrooms, twenty three two bedrooms, and twenty three three bedroom units. So it's a good mix of different unit sizes. In addition to the housing, there's a bunch of support supporting amenities onsite, things like picnic tables, playgrounds, a plaza, a clubhouse. There's some cool renderings that we can show that those amenities. One thing that's really important to note is that the open space accounts for forty point six percent of the site. So one point eight eight acres of the site are open space. This includes the large natural area that's to the north. Those areas will be remain natural with no planned improvements. This the site plan shows also landscaping improvements. There's a light landscaping improvement plan that was required as part of the peak planning and development. The proposed public street that we also discussed earlier that would hopefully go through after a set of three developments is called the Loop Road on the on the site plan, and it provides access to the project. There's two points of ingress and egress to the parking, which essentially creates its own kind of loop through the apartments on that Loop Road. There's also an interior walkway system connecting the buildings and park areas. And it includes, the plan does does not include a walkway improvements along the Loop Road. So there there's a there's a walkway, but not along the road itself. The site plan identifies a five foot fence to the west between the driveways. It's not clear from the site plan whether this will continue to the north or the south driveways, but there is a site fence indicated on the plan currently. On the complex, the multifamily complex, the developer owner will be responsible for maintaining the property. So this is property, private property, the streets, private property. All that will be on the owner developer to maintain and upgrade any of those right away improvements. Just to note, kind of three very important documents that I think we point to as I go through the this presentation is that there was a traffic study done and stormwater study done by McKinsey Engineering that's a supplement to this. So that was looked at. We also had a wetlands analysis done as well as a geotechnical report. So there's quite a bit of studies that have gone done, have been done on the site. And it says, well, the project requires some improvements, you know, things like infiltration basins. But we haven't identified anything that would prohibit the proposed development based on the traffic studies, stormwater study, wetlands, or geotechnical analysis. So there's some requirements that are based on the reports, but no, nothing that would preclude development. So in SRR zone, section three point oh three oh, it permits multifamily dwellings in that zone. But they require, but in this section, it also requires a planning commission to use the PUD procedures in section four point three, four point one three six to evaluate the application. So when we go through this, we're going to look at the criteria in the base zone, which is the underlying zone SRR, as well as the criteria for the planned unit development. One thing that's important about the PUD is the whole point of having to do a PUD is that you, as as the acting planning commission, has the authority to modify the development standards, any of the criteria. The only thing that we can't modify is the housing density, and that's a comprehensive plan policy that we can't change. So density is not is kind of non negotiable, but in terms of modifying any of the other standards, that's something that you can do as a commission. One other thing that's important to note is in the SRR zone, the community melding meeting building is typically considered a conditional use. So if it was just the base layer without the planned unit development, we would probably need to do a conditional use for the community, community building. But because we're using the PUD process, the sub middle will not require a separate conditional use permit. I think that's just important to note. Disapplication and review are only considering the planned development layout and not the buildings themselves. So I think that's really important, too. We're not doing a design review of every structure. But that being said, the locations, if approved, your commission has the authority to condition decisions on the final layout conforming to the proposal. So in terms of size and orientation, so we can look at size, spacing, setbacks, heights, those type types of things. We're not doing a site design review, so that's just an important thing, a differentiation here. Site reviewer, designer view is not part of the P, of the PUD process. We checked with Public Works, and they've indicated that water service is onsite with remains and the Carney City Road water mains available. You may or may not know, but the city was granted funds by the state to put a new water main in Classic Street, which is great. It's good for the city, good for everything all around, and especially since there was a grant received to that, it's helpful. This improvement will allow for the property to provide adequate fire flows for the site. So that was one big hurdle that needed to come over for the development here was providing water, and then that grant really made that happen. The Haylen Bay wastewater also confirmed that there's wastewater service, sanitary service sewer available at the site. And the Haylen Bay Fire and Rescue also said that this is conditionally approved. Obviously, they do final inspection when doing buildings, but conditionally approved is a letter that they provided as well. The city has an engineering consultant. Lancaster Mobley did a traffic study and or reviewed the traffic study. And I think that there's a couple of things that I wanted to note here that only because the traffic study was reviewed, kind of leading up to this meeting, and there was a few changes that came in kind of in the last week or so. So I wanted to make sure that when this that you all knew that when the city's engineer reviewed the traffic study, that they said it does not include a left turn lane warrant analysis. So what they're what we're saying is applicant's transportation here will need to update this to include this left turn warrant analysis. So these are conditions that I think that if you do choose to improve, to approve this, that we would, we would put these conditions on of approval on. So it would begin to be that left turn lane warrant analysis. And it did not include an engineering stamp, maybe clerical error. We need to require that as part of the final approval, that engineering stamp. The third and final thing would be a condition of approval on the to review and confirm that there's adequate intersection site distances at the Loop Road and the Carney City Road intersection as part of the design. So when we're considering the conditions of approval, which we'll get to near the end of the presentation, just remember that there's several things that the traffic engineer was hoping that we could condition as part of this approval. Here's the site plan. This is a draft of that site plan. You can see here, this is the Loop Road that we keep referring to. This would be the ingress and egress, the two ways in and out of the parking. There's again five buildings, one, two, three, four, no, excuse me, one, two, three, four, five multifamily complexes, and then this in the center is the Plaza and Clubhouse. So you can see that. They also did a few renderings, so this is kind of a three D rendering of that same site design we saw with the buildings here, 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 the five buildings, and then again, the clubhouse with the the plaza in the middle. It's nice when you have these renderings because it gives us kind of an idea of the facade and the bulk of the of the planned development. And then these are some renderings that were also provided by the applicant. I believe this is the clubhouse and plaza here. You can see some of the renderings of the complexes here and here. So it's nice again to have those renderings for us to see. Lots of words, but at least a few images for all of us to kind of take in here. So there are some adjustments and modifications that were reflected in the staff report as well. As I already mentioned, it's the area was annexed recently, and then the SRR zone was applied. A condition of that annexation and and zone change is that the development of the newly annexed property shall be limited to moderate income housing as defined in Oregon revised statute. The limitation shall be placed in the deed restriction. So Leila was mentioning the complexity of the deed restriction. This is exactly that. So because part of the record, the condition to approve the annexation and zone change was to make sure that this property was used specifically for affordable housing. The applicant has provided a letter from the Oregon Housing and Community Services that indicates this project is eligible for that housing funding and that this project is intended to be a moderate income housing as defined by Oregon revised statute. So very important that that is something that they're complying with. Another adjustment or modification is there were new state regulations that were just that just became effective. SB fifteen thirty seven was is now effective as of January first. These regulations are some of the many regulations you've probably heard about coming out of the state that are involving affordable housing projects. And an example that's specific to this project is a jurisdiction must approve the request to increase building height by twenty percent or reduce required setbacks by ten percent as affordable housing projects. So regardless of what a local jurisdiction's code may say, SB fifteen thirty seven says we must allow for an increased height of twenty percent or reduce setback if it is an affordable housing project. Now, this is going to be important to note because the applicant is asking for both reduced setbacks and increased height as part of this process. So keep that in mind that this will come up again further down in the presentation. Here's those three modifications that I just mentioned. An increase to building height, so the building height, the increase, the the building height requirement now is twenty eight and a half feet. The request is to go to thirty seven point two inches. If we were going to go by SB fifteen thirty seven, that increase would allow up to thirty four point two, which is a twenty percent increase. However, the applicant's increase is asking for a greater increase than the the twenty percent, up to three feet. So just making that note is the applicant's going above and beyond what we would be required to allow as part of SB fifteen thirty seven. The second one is a is a reduction in the front yard setback. Currently, we require twenty feet. The request is to reduce that to ten. And there's also a request to to reduce parking requirements. Currently, the the requirement would be two parking spaces per unit. And the applicant is requesting a reduction to one point six put spaces per unit. And again, I mentioned this already, but this is where you come into play as a commission. This decision allows you to make modifications because it's a PUD process to any of these criteria. The zoning ordinance does not include criteria guidelines interpreting these or determining these modifications. So you have some leeway here, and I think that's usually why people go down the planned unit development route is because there are some unique things that people want to do to have some additional flexibility. So that's why you're here to help us make these decisions. Again, this this evaluation of the proposals based on the PUD procedures. And then the subsection of the rule to review these provisions. In reviewing the purposes of planning unit development, that gives you that greater freedom, and I think that's what we're looking for. This is directly after, the finding is this is directly applicable to this request. That's the key here. And then it also establishes the following standards and requirements. Planted unit development may include any uses and conditional uses permitted in the underlying zone. Again, SRR is an under underlying zone. In terms of findings, the proposed established multifamily apartment complex is previously identified and permitted in the SRR zone. The SRR zone establishes a base requirement, and then the PUD allows us to then modify that base requirement. A developer can aggregate dwelling units in the zone into a cluster into multiple dwelling structures so long it does does not exceed the the density limits. So the applicant has chosen to now aggregate the dwellings as multiple dwelling structures and cluster them at the south end of the site. So they've taken advantage of this provision and clustered those units have not exceeded the sixty unit dwelling unit per acre limit. The zoning ordinance implements a comprehensive plan and establishes density limit. So again, the comp plan sets that density limit. Overall density in the SSR zone is six point five dwelling units per acre. But if they're clustered within the SR zone, a maximum density of thirteen dwelling units is is allowed if you provide forty percent of the total area as open space or public or private park. So that's really important. So basically, what's what's happening here is they're saying, okay, we want to back, we want to go up to that maximum thirteen units, and we're providing the forty percent open spaces at requirement. And they've indicated on the plan, so I think that that's important to make sure that that's also reflected in their design. Let me get through this, and then I will get to the questions. I'll finish the slide, and then we'll go to those two questions. Basically, I mentioned this already, but the open space totals, one point eight eight acres or forty point six percent of the site. So because of that, the city is allowing that thirteen units per acre, which is about sixty point six dwelling units on the site, which we round down. And so the proposed sixty units complies with the density standards. And all open space will remain part of the private property and limited to the residents, just a quick note there. Lee, I think you were the first one with the question.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Just an edit on the figures that somebody came up with. It actually pencils out the 60.06 dwelling units, which doesn't preclude it from happening. It's just to be in place, I think, so.
Thank you. So that's a good note to note. The math, if you do it perfectly, it's 60.6.
60.06.
60.06. Thank you, Lee. Make sure that's on the record. Is there anything else, Lee, that you wanted to know?
No, that's all on this, this particular section.
Great. Thank you. Tom, did you have something you wanted to note or question?
I guess I'd forgotten this, but after the Manzanita Lofts application, we had a great deal of discussion about this provision.
Yes.
The zone, and I thought we agreed to modify it somehow, but apparently that hasn't taken effect yet.
What we did was we modified the definition of open space. So that did happen and the, and we and the staff has found that this, the definition that we had come up with, this definition falls within that, that. So we have, the staff's findings is that the 40.6% left for open space does meet that definition. Have a clarification there on that?
I think you covered it. So we never changed the percentage, just how it was defined. And so we actually did share that with the applicant. And then when staff did the evaluation, they use that definition in order to evaluate it. It has not officially been changed, however, in, in the zoning ordinance. So both parties have utilized it despite that.
Okay. And we did it by changing the definition of open space or the deletion of as public or private park area golf course.
Yeah, the, that part did not change the, but the definition is what we're working with. Both the city and applicant have agreed on what that definition is and, and use that definition for that 40%.
But the official rule, and that's why it's still here, is as it's defined in the zoning ordinance. It's just, we use that additional information from the planning commission's deliberations on the new definition. So we can't use the new definition technically because it has not been adopted, but we use it in advisory capacity and as did the applicant.
Yes.
So that's why the language is still the same.
Okay, and this open area, we're not talking about on the diagrams, the area, the playground and the plaza and that, it's some area to the north, which is, I guess, on the diagrams, is the left-hand side of the diagram, right?
I think it's everything. It's, it's both the passive open space and those parks and plaza areas that equal that 40%.
Okay, and they don't, sorry, but I don't remember this full debate. It doesn't have to be open to the public.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Karen?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, the, is the square footage of the clubhouse considered open space?
No.
And the parking areas are not considered open space? The parking area is correct. Okay, great. Thank you. I have a whole bunch more questions. But I think I can hold off until, I think, are we going to hear something from the developer as well?
We will.
Okay, and I wanted to clarify one thing you mentioned, Scott, that in the narrative, I believe it said that the, what we're calling the Loop Road, and I do hope that name will change.
Me too.
That that street area will be deeded to the city?
Yes.
You said that it would not, and I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. I might have misspoke. The area that, that would be the, the driveway that goes through the parking lots, that would be private and maintained by, by the developer owner. But yes, the, the quote unquote Loop Road would then be dedicated and would be a public street that again, would hopefully connect eventually for that connectivity.
Okay, thank you.
Bert?
I just, it's more this Loop Road question stuff. And it appears Meadow, Meadows Drive has been constructed quite a ways. And eventually Meadows Drive will connect with Loop Road and Loop Road will become Meadows Drive, I assume. And is that like 20 feet distance or 200 feet distance? It's short or it's very convincing, I think, to all of us about the condition of that connection.
Yeah.
Now, Leila, you mentioned some other road that was going to connect. And so it would be really useful to really clarify all that for us and the timing of that.
I'll defer to the developer to cover that so that you get it straight from the, I was going to say the horse's mouth, but that seems rude. You, you get where I'm going.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I don't, and Bert, I don't have a great answer, so we will do that. Brad, do you have a question?
Yeah, a bit to Bert's question and a few others. Is there a master site plan that links up either the four out of 12 acres to the 70 that shows any level of connectivity or master planning vision?
There is not, no. I mean, there's been ideas and we've seen plans, but those, you know, those things can change. There is no larger scale plan. However, I would say that the TSP does require connectivity and block length. So that you can't just have a road, you know, doesn't have dead ends or that doesn't have, that has too long a block length. So we do have transportation policies that should get us to where we need to be in terms of that overall connectivity. But yeah, I wish we had a master plan. That would be nice. Okay, I will jump back into this. Again, apologize for the many, many words, but we will get through this, I promise. This one's just a quick note that bonding is an option. If we need to do that, it's not proposed at the time, but that is part of something that you can do for planned unit developments. So in terms of planned unit procedures, I'm going to go through a bunch of these procedures. It's just to, to, I have to go through every single one of these. It'll take a little while, but we should be able to get through them fairly quickly. The following procedures shall be observed and applying for and acting on a planned unit development. Applicants shall submit all their copies and we need to notify 250 feet. The finding is that yes, we've received all the materials and we did the proper noticing just to make sure that we cover that. So that was all done correctly. Prior to discussion of the plan at the public hearing, city managers distribute copies to city agencies and staff. Again, we have done that. All the city staff and agencies have provided letters whether they can support or, and give us any conditions. So that has been taken care of as procedure. We need the planning commission to consider the preliminary development plan at the meeting, at which time the comments of persons receiving the plan for study shall be reviewed. And considering the plan, you as the commission should determine that there are specific physical conditions of objectives and development which the proposal will satisfy to warrant the departure from the standard ordinance requirement. So what is, what is it that we need that requires or allows for this PUD process to happen? And the finding is that the topography doesn't create a special limitations on development, but this, but the developer will make certain improvements such as stormwater drainage and building foundations. That's based on the Stormwater Report and the Geotech Report. So, and, and then the commission is required to review the application as a planned unit development. And then we'll go through the next set of provisions here. The resulting development will not, will not, will not be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan or provisions to zoning objectives of the area, particularly with regard to dune stabilization, geologic hazards, or storm drainage. Your zoning ordinance implements the city's plan. The project establishes multifamily dwelling units of density prohibited by ordinance and is therefore consistent with intended use. So that's really important. Again, those engineering reports and identified improvements can accommodate development. But again, you can place requirements on the development as conditions as we get to that point. The planning commission also can, the, the area around the development can be planned in a substantial harmony with the proposed plan. I think that's important too. So anything that we kind of allow or approve today will kind of set that precedence for precedent for the, the future neighborhoods compatibility and what development occurs around it. So in terms of findings, residential development is located to the east. Property outside of semi limits, otherwise a stable sizable portion of the immediate areas undeveloped. The plan can be completed with, within a reasonable time period. City's understanding that the applicant tends to develop this project in a single phase, so this shouldn't be a long drawn out process. The commission retains the authority to place a reasonable time constraints on these activities. So if you feel, if we feel as a, as a commission that there needs to be time limits or anything placed on this, on the phase development, we can do that as well. We're also supposed to make sure that the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets. Again, I mentioned the traffic study. Traffic study shows that there is adequate infrastructure to support the anticipated traffic. The analysis was limited, limited to traffic generated by the developments and, and it's shown that it doesn't significantly impact local street system based on the report. The analysis assumed the construction of this Loop Road with discussions with the city, the road will eventually be dedicated as a public street, which we clarified earlier. Thank you, Karen, for doing that. At a minimum, it is recommended the street be improved at at least up to the proposed south entrance to allow emergency access. So we're recommending that this, that this, the road is improved up to the entrance, the south entrance, so that we can at least have some sort of emergency access if necessary. So I think that's an important one to note as well. The planning commission shall notify the applicant whether, in its opinion, the foregoing provisions have been satisfied. And if not, whether they can be satisfied with further plan or vision. So what we can do here is the applicant has submitted a stormwater plan for the development. Preliminary analysis says that, that they do need the infiltration ponds. Compliance with this provision will be termed when the applicant submits engineering plan. So some of this stuff, we think that preliminary is okay, but we can't get there until the engineering plans have been submitted. But they will be built to engineering standards once those plans have been submitted. I think I skipped that one. Nope, I didn't. Following this preliminary meeting, the applicant may proceed with a request for approval of the plan development by filing an application for amendment to the ordinance. So the purpose of this is to identify the site as planned development on the city zoning map. In effect, this requires a submittal and review of the final plan. So when you do a planned unit development, the zoning actually changes. So we're, by doing this, it's no longer an SR zone. It will become a quote unquote PD planned development on the zoning map. So that's just a kind of a procedural thing that I wanted to mention there. Following this preliminary meeting, the applicant may proceed with a request for approval of the plan development by filing an application for amendment to this ordinance. So that's kind of the next step is amending that ordinance to change from SR to PUD. Again, the reason for this is so that we can identify that on the zoning map. In addition to the requirements of the section, the planning commission may attach conditions. We already mentioned that. If approved, the staff report includes a list of, of conditions. So if you do choose to approve this, my recommendation to staff is that you include those conditions. Also, there's, you are allowed to add additional conditions or remove conditions that the staff has put in the report. An approved plan development shall be identified on the existing zoning map with letters PD. I again mentioned this, this is not something you need to worry about, but it's something that we assume as the city is responsibility in, in updating that map based on approval decision. Building permits in the planned unit development shall be issued only on the basis of the approved plan. So the project has to confirm the layout unless modified for the planning commission. So if we approve this and the developer comes back and says, oh, we need to move this and move that around, they actually have to come back to you with any modification. So I just wanted to make sure that that's not some, or something you're all aware of. If for some reason this is approved and the applicant slash developer comes back and says, oh, shoot, we need to move this building 10 feet. We need to add 16 parking spaces. We need to move the clubhouse. You know, whatever it may be, that, that decision will come back to you as a planning commission. Okay, now we're on section 3.0304B. And it states the following, standards other than density in the SR zone shall conform to those established in R3. So again, this is zoned SR and the developer regulations in our three zone apply to this program, project. The commission can modify these standards and also the provisions in SB 1537s, as we mentioned before, for affordable housing can adjust certain standards. So it's a combination of both the PUD and the Senate bill that allows you to make those modifications. Okay, um, this are, this section actually has the applicable standards in the R3 zone. Again, I have to go through all of these. All of these don't necessarily have to be met because we are looking at a planned unit development. But in the SR zone, base zone, it's a minimum of 5,000 square foot lots. We're not paying attention to that because it's a PUD. So the findings are that 60 units on the 4.62 acre site does not exceed, or exceeds the minimum layout of the 5,000 square feet. But you're allowed to do that because it's a PUD. And it complies with the underlying density requirement. So I think that's the key is that we're not looking at lot size here because it's the PUD. We, we defer to the 60 units per acre for density. Minimum lot size shall be 40 feet, except on a corner lot. The proposal complies with this. It's quite, exceeds that by quite a bit. Minimum lot depth shall be 90 feet, also complies with that minimum lot depth. Minimum front yard shall be 20 feet. Mentioned this already, but they're asking for a reduction to 10 feet. So just remembering that there is a request for a front yard setback from 10, from 20 to 10 feet. The minimum side yard setback is five feet and the layout also complies with this minimal requirement so that it meets that side yard setback requirement. The maximum building or structure height shall be 28 foot six inches. Again, we mentioned this. But the applicant is requesting three foot increase to 37.2 inches. I mentioned this already again, but there could be potential to only do the 20% as indicated by the Senate bill. But that's really up to the applicant and they chose to ask for three. The, the difference is only three feet and it's really a matter of aesthetics. So, you know, it really is a choice whether to, to look at that 20% or go all the way to that three feet and allow 37.2 inches for the height. So that's something we'll discuss, I'm sure, as, as a commission. Minimum rear yard setback shall be 10. Structures exceed this minimum requirement so that again, is that 10 or the 10 foot requirement. The minimum, the maximum lot coverage in our three zones shall not exceed 55%. Based on the calculations from the applicant, the lot, the lot coverage is approximately 34%. So it's less than that 55. In areas without high water, a dry well capable of absorbing stormwater runoff of the impervious service shall be provided. Noted in the potential stormwater plan, they do address that in the stormwater plan. Yes, Karen?
I am a little bit confused about what is considered a side setback and what's considered a rear setback. Are we talking about orientation to the Loop Road? Or are we talking about internal orientation of the buildings inside the development?
Orientation to the Loop Road. Thank you for clarifying that. So that Loop Road would be your front setback.
Okay, so the rear yard would, building B would be the, that's, would be 10 feet?
Yes, yes. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, it is always, it's always a determination, which is a front yard, which is backyard because then that determines which is the side yard. So thank you for, for making that clear. So this one is interesting. One other thing I mentioned they're asking for is a reduction in parking requirements. The current standard will require up to, will require 120 spaces. The current standard will require up to will require 120 spaces. And that would be a two units or two parking spaces per unit. Again, I mentioned applicants requesting 1.6 unit spaces per unit, which would be about 96 spaces total. So that reduction of about 24 parking spaces. I think this is kind of interested to note that, you know, the these are applicant notes here that I put in the report, but I think that what it is is they're saying that, you know, two per unit is more than affordable housing developments tend to need. For one, but there is a mix of two and three bedroom apartments. So a ratio of 1.6 still maintains enough parking to balance the needs of the yard, the larger units and the smaller units. You would it's kind of a burden to say that a single unit would need two parking spots, but maybe a three bedroom would use two. So if you have a mix of, as I mentioned earlier, there's a mix of two, one, two and three bedroom units. A ratio of 1.6 is pretty standard when looking at that type of mixing unit sizes. So I think that, you know, they're also looking at, you know, respecting the site and trying to use as much remain as much existing vegetation and undisturbed undisturbed as much area as possible to do that. So, you know, from my perspective, it seems reasonable to ask for this. We've had a lot of discussion about parking reductions for many other projects. So I think that that's something that we should, you know, discuss and consider. Karen, did you have something? Did you raise your hand or was that Brad?
That was on me. Is Loop Road intended to integrate on street parking?
I don't believe so. I would need to look at that. I don't know for sure. And it doesn't show currently on the site design. It just shows the right away. Typically, the right away would be wide enough for at least one side, but I'm not sure what the plans are for that. But that's a good question because if you're providing on street parking, that does typically help with the parking reduction to a development, you know, adjacent.
Who um, whose decision does that fall with?
Well, we really aren't going to. It's hard to make. It's not kind of a decision that we would do as part of the PUD because it's only onsite parking. And what's going to happen is because the road is going to be dedicated to the city, it won't be part of the site eventually. So, Bert.
Yeah, Loop Road would be classified some road in the TSP plan and the ordinance that is forthcoming. And I believe depending on its designation, it would allow for shoulder parking.
Yes.
That would be good to clarify.
Yeah, that is. And I believe I don't know, but I'm assuming it's probably a local road classification. Bert, and I believe that does allow for shoulder parking.
I I think so. Very common in Manzanita to be parking on the shoulder.
Yep. So maybe not official parking spaces, but if you're brave enough to park on the shoulder, go right ahead. All right, bike parking. I think we're getting close. The ordinance doesn't have requirement for bike parking. So but the good thing is your transportation system plan does have some policies there. And that would, the transportation system plan recommends two bike spaces for every four dwelling units. So based on this, that would require 30 parking parking spaces at 60 dwelling units per acre. The proposed site design provides 32 parking spaces, so they're exceeding it by a couple spaces. So agreeing to provide parking and and complying with the transportation system plan. So that sounds good to me. Let's see here. I got a typo. Sorry about that. I guess at least 50% of the required open space needs to be usable by residents. So the applicant has said that the dedicated stormwater swill areas, all open space areas used well by residents. This includes outdoor plazas, playgrounds, lawns, pathways, and nearly two acres of natural open space reserved as natural habitat and buffer. So that that finding we said is met. Parking and storage. So I should say that I guess we'll jump jump to this next one, but parking and storage areas are covered if possible and are located in unobtrusive location and are buffered from surrounding residences. So in terms of findings, the city includes the site includes covered maintenance and trash storage areas located towards the rear of the property. The parking lot is not covered. It loops around the development with most of the parking spaces located at the rear of the property away from the street. Parking configuration minimizes visual impact to street, allowing the buildings and landscaping to become the prominent elements along the street frontage. Street trees and interior landscaping, the perimeter hedges and existing natural vegetation all serve to screen the parking lot from the surrounding areas. So they're just addressing kind of hiding that in terms of that provision. Parking and traffic circulation must be adequately designed to afford access to dwellings to provide loading zones and sufficient maneuvering space. Safety egress and ingress and egress from adjacent streets must be considered. With the two driveways, the parking layout provides continuous and safe circulation loop. Parking stalls are near the dwelling units, players and common clubhouse. So that provision is met. Okay, we got through the provisions of the PUD and the and all of the underlying zone. And now I'm going to get through my summarizing comments and then we hopefully would get to discussion. Sorry, this is taking so long, but I just want to make sure we got through all this. Under consideration, the basic layout that establishes the framework for future development of the site based on the submittal, the ordinance, what the ordinance allows, reducing the front yard setback and parking requirements appear to be appropriate. I think that that's something that makes sense to me, but hopefully we can have a discussion about that. The commission must approve the 20% increase in the building height, but may wish to consider whether proposal warrants an additional three foot. So we should discuss what we want to do about the height. Information submitted by the city and other public agencies state the site is serviceable. We need final engineering plans before construction may begin. The site does not contain wetlands, geo hazards or similar limitations. The applicant must return to the commission with final plans detailing building locations. Final facility improvements in open space improvements to ensure consistency with approved decision. The plan development provisions do not establish any timelines for the project. So if developer completes the project within a reasonable amount of time, staff suggests the commission limit approval to two years from the date of the final decision. Talked about this a little earlier where we talked about doing this in a timely manner. So it's the staff's recommendation that we put a two year timeframe on that, at least for substantial progress. City staff recommends a proposal can comply with the planned unit development criteria. The preliminary approval shall be limited to layout submitted and approved as part of the application and includes the following. These are the three main things we've already discussed. Minimum setback reduced to 10. Included a reduction of parking to 96 spaces from 120 and 32 parking bike parking spaces, which is two more than is required. The minimum building height for any structure shall be 34.2 feet inches. So these are the things that we need to recommend as conditions. Again, final plan shall be approved within two years of final date. The applicant should submit evidence confirming the adequate intersection site distances and loop road. Already mentioned that one. Loop road site distances is twice. Compliance with the conditions of approval shall be the sole responsibility of the applicant. I think that's it. Oh, I think this one is important. During construction, Loop Road shall be sufficiently improved according to the Nhan Bay Fire District requirement. So that we need to make sure that we have access on Loop Road for emergency access. That's another key importance. And then you have three options, actually kind of four options, but approve the application for adopting findings and conditions contained in the in the staff report. Approve the application, adopting modified findings and or conditions. Deny the application, establish findings as to why the application fails to comply with the condition of criteria or continue hearing to a date at a certain time. So that is the last of my presentation. I'll stop sharing now. If you'd like me to bring anything up, I back up, I can. Thank you for going through that with us. I know it was a lot longer than it should have taken, but again, very important for all of us to know the details of this proposal. So Karen, I'll pass it to you.
Okay, thank you. I neglected to do something. This has been so long since we've actually had a hearing. But it's really important that the members of the commission disclose any bias. Any communications with the developers. And we need to give the public an opportunity to deny us individually or as a group the ability to hear this proposal. We should have done this at the very onset and I apologize. So with that, let me ask the members of the commission, just take a little poll. Let's start with you, Bert. Any bias, conflicts of interest, anything?
Bias, no conflicts of interest, no communication on the project and I have not visited the site. I have driven by the site many, many times.
Okay, thank you. How about you, Frank?
I have only driven by the site. That's it.
Okay.
Have no conflicts and I haven't knowingly talked to any of the development team, so. I have driven by the side. I've driven to the end of Meadow Road, so or lane.
Okay, thank you. How about you, Brad?
None whatsoever.
Okay, Lee?
No bias, no conflict of interest, no ex parte contact. And I visited the site on two occasions in this last week and have something I'll share later about the sight lines on the road.
Okay.
Leave that. We'll leave that for now.
Thank you. Thomas?
I've had no communications with the developers outside of the prior meetings we had. I haven't visited the site. And I have no conflicts or biases that I can think of.
Okay, thank you. And for my part, I have not visited the site other than driving by it, whatever the 20 mile an hour, 25 mile an hour limit is. I have had no knowing conversations with anyone related to the project. I have no bias and no conflicts of interest. So let me just ask the public if there's any reason to assume that there is bias or conflicts of interest on behalf of any of the commission members, speak up. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. And again, I apologize. I'll do better in the future. We hope. Is the applicant here and wants to make any kind of statements before we move to questions?
Please. Hi, good evening. I do have a short presentation to share. I appreciate Scott getting through a lot of the information, so we'll try and be brief. Let me share my screen here and get set up.
And would you introduce yourself also?
Yes, I will. Okay, is everyone seeing my presentation here?
Do we also see your notes?
Oh, well, you walked the other screen then.
Yeah.
Now do you see the other screen?
Looks good.
Great, thank you for that, Lila. Okay, thank you Chair Riddick Yurka and the planning commissioners. Good evening. My name is Jerry Jones and I'm with Mocker. We are a strategic development consultant hired by Home First for the Manzanita Pines project. I again want to start first by saying thank you to Walton Scott for their staff report. I think it was very inclusive. And again, give some kudos to Scott Frigasi for stepping in this evening for the presentation. I believe their positive recommendations for approval of our application is greatly appreciated. And we're excited to present some additional details for the project. Our project team here for you tonight consists of Home First Development Partners, myself, Polyfong Architectural and Design, McKenzie is our civil engineers and also our transportation planner. And I believe both Rick Hankis and Jim Pence are in attendance from Encore Investments as needed. We do love Manzanita. This project is right in the heart of Manzanita and we all think Manzanita is probably the best city along the coast. Probably everybody on the Zoom call here could could nod our head to that. But our project site specific is right here in the northeast area of the larger development parcel next to Highland neighborhood. We consist of 4.62 acres. It's just a portion of that recent larger plat and annexation into Manzanita. It is not all of that. So we're just talking about this smaller portion in the top right corner. And our access is off of Nakarni City Road. The current zoning for the property, as Scott said, is just SRR, which does allow for the 13 units per acre. So site overview, I would like to hand it off to Ralph Henderson of McKenzie real quick to help walk us through this.
Yes, thank you, Jerry, and thank you, Scott, and other city staff for presenting. So Scott covered most of this. I'll just do a quick overview. My name is Ralph Henderson with civil engineer with McKenzie. And the site does have five residential buildings and a clubhouse. The site slopes from north to south. So north is pointing left of the screen here. So left to right in the screen and also slopes from east to west. So from top to bottom on the screen. So effectively everything generally flows from northeast to southwest. That places the two ponds. There's one in the middle west of the site and one in the southwest corner of the site. And between those two, they take all of the stormwater from downspits, parking lots, all of that that gets piped and conveyed to those two storm facilities. The buildings are essentially set with the hill. So as the hillside slopes, the buildings essentially match that. So the building at the high side, the furthest to left will be higher and the buildings will step down as you come down through the site. All the utilities will come to the site through Loop Road. And yes, we are trying to change the name of that. So hopefully by the time you get a submittal, the name of that street will be changed to something more suitable. But yeah, the utilities will be designed coming to the site through Loop Road, which will be a separate project from the actual site. And essentially, all of the buildings will have the standard sanitary waters and, you know, storm for downspits and the standards franchise utilities as well, electric, et cetera, et cetera. So so anyway, I think that is a summary of the sites. As I say, Scott covered most of what we needed to say. So thank you again, Scott, and back to you, Jerry.
Thanks, Ralph, and Ralph will be with us for any questions following the presentation as well. Next, I'm going to bring up either Keith or Skylar from Polyfong Architecture. And we're going to go through some conformance with the Manzanita code in relation to comprehensive plan. We are not going to go through 50 pages. Right? We just want to hit a couple highlights as you guys are considering this application. So go ahead, Keith.
Jerry, and thanks, everybody, for having us. Yes, as similar to what Ralph said, Scott covered most of all of this in his presentation, so don't want to dwell on any of it too much. But, you know, as we kind of covered, the multifamily use is covered outright in the SRR zone. Our proposed overall lot coverage is only 34% for the total site. So we're definitely underneath the requirements for that. Bringing in the 60 units of multifamily development, it does not have an outward impact on overall traffic accommodations that are existing. So the existing transportation infrastructure is able to handle the new capacity as indicated on the traffic studies that were submitted and reviewed also by Lancaster. And then as we've kind of talked about the open space that was that was discussed, you know, the buildings are clustered so that we could maintain open space. And we'll touch on this a little bit more, but I think this came up earlier with the numbers on the open space. Our 40% of open space that is indicated in our plans is actually just the full natural undeveloped open space. If we start to factor in all of the open space within the clustered area of the development where the playground and plaza is and the other open lawn areas for residents to use, we actually bump up to over 60% of open space for the entire property. So I know there is some discussion on that earlier, so we just wanted to kind of hit on that a little bit. And then as as Scott covered in the proposal, there are basically just sort of three things that we are looking at within as far as some adjustments, which is the parking ratio. And then we'll get into the height adjustment. We'll definitely talk more about that later. And then the building setback that Scott mentioned. But one thing that we wanted to be cognizant of, especially considering a reduction in parking ratio is having an accommodation for bike parking. We know that's something that's coming down the pipeline into the Manzanita zoning ordinance eventually. And so we wanted to kind of recognize that and account and try to accommodate for bikes in our plan now. And so we wanted to kind of recognize that and try to accommodate for bikes in our plan now, which is something that we have covered as we ran our calcs for 60 dwelling units. We'd be looking at 30 bike parking spaces and we're proposing to have 32 in alignment with that future requirement. Jerry?
Great, thanks Keith. Now I want to continue with an introduction and bring in Ben Prey from Home First Development Partners. Ben was gonna get, is going to give you some background on their company and some details of the affordable housing that could come here, so. Please, Ben.
Hi, everyone. Pardon me, I'm nursing a cold, so forgive my voice, I hope you can hear me. I'm glad to be here, I was hoping we could meet in person. But I'm Ben Prey, I'm the owner of Home First Development. We've been privileged to work on this opportunity for more than a couple of years now. And that time has really benefited the development, frankly. I'm really proud about what we're gonna be building together. Our company, we're, all we do is build affordable housing throughout Oregon. So in the coast, in front of Oregon, up and down the valley, and then in the metro area as well. We're a B Corp. And we also, everything that we build, we intend to own for the long term. So when we talk about height adjustments and things like that, we're really asking as your future neighbor, we're gonna be here for a while, so we're thinking about these as long-term assets for the community and what's the best for the residents in the community long-term.
Thanks Ben. We felt now would be a good time to dive a little bit deeper into the height adjustment that we're requesting. Really, this is sparked from the heart of what Home First does and why we're asking for nine-foot ceilings with inside of the apartments versus eight-foot. So I'm gonna have Ben continue there and just for your consideration as we would ask for that additional three feet.
Yeah, and we appreciate it. We know it's not technically necessary. Folks will be just fine with eight feet, but the thing about it is if we built this as market rate housing, it would be nine feet. And we want this to be indistinguishable from market rate housing. So when folks walk in, it feels like they're in a regular apartment and it's not in any way different or distinct, and it should look the same from the street, just like when you walk in. So, you know, we're gonna foot the bill, it's more expensive to build to standards that would be as if it was rented for twice the rent. We want to pay that bill, we want it to be as high quality as possible, both in the interiors and the exteriors. We hope you recognize that this is not impacting all the buildings on the site, it's just two of the buildings. And that we were very thoughtful about considering how, you know, the elevated height, how it would be, how the surrounding landscape might impact that height. And we really feel like it's really, kind of that difference of three feet is indistinguishable for, if you're, if you don't live there, but if you do, it really will make a difference. And we've built apartments with eight-feet, eight-foot ceilings, and we built, everything we build right now is nine feet, every single apartment that we built. So we don't want this one to be different or in any way less than the other products that we're building throughout Oregon.
Thanks Ben. I'm gonna move on and go into a little bit more detail on the height adjustment. So here's a side-by-side elevation of the proposed building height that we're asking for, and that's on the left. And then what's allowed is on the right. You can see that, how that's reduced just by a little bit there. I think more impactful is a representation of a rendering here. And this one is the same buildings that I just showed you. It's just more a presentation of rendering, and this is a picture of the actual location on the site. And I like to ask, I was asking our team, I was like, show me the difference, can you see the difference on this? And really, the building on the left is what we're asking for consideration on tonight. And the one on the right, as you can see very slightly, it's just a little bit shorter, but what's important is not just a one-dimensional or two-dimensional design that's on a piece of paper. This takes that design, puts it in place of the actual location. So you can see how the surrounding nature of the trees and the topography could make this a unique consideration. Speaking of topography, not photography, topography and landscape. These two slides I want to dive into a little bit of detail on. Here's, it's just further explaining the relationship of the buildings with that existing topography that I'm talking about. The picture on the right shows quite a slope of topography. And then the picture on the left shows how our site plan fits on the property with a couple spot elevation callouts. We have finished floor on building A and B. If you take those finished floors and then you go up to the property to the right, you know, after our property line, as it slopes up, those elevations are at four or greater than four feet in this area. So we're asking for three-foot difference, but the elevation slope is four-foot. So it sits, tucks into that slope. And then up here towards the top of it, it's upwards of 15, 16-foot elevation. So we feel that this is pretty a unique site. It's not as if we're putting this building in the middle of a flat plain and bringing it tall up. The consideration we hope for is that the folks that do live on Clipper Court to the east of us, they have trees and they have slope, and it won't, they won't be looking up at this building by any means. Most of these buildings will be, you know, looked down upon from their property. We have some other highlights that we want to go through, and I think Ben's gonna do a great job in touching on AMI and how that, how his company has been very successful throughout the state for that.
Sure, well, I don't know if I'll do a great job, but this bottom line is this is affordable housing, and this is rent restricted at 60%, so these are folks who are working in the community and need a place they can afford to live. I believe the city's report identified a need for exactly 60 units, and we used that and said, okay, well, let's make 60 units work. That's part of why you see, you know, we had, we can't do everything. We needed a couple of the buildings to be three stories high to meet that need. We've worked closely with Polyfong now for a long time on this, really trying to make sure that it looks and feels like coastal Oregon should look and feel. So you know, using metal roofs and cedar siding and a really, I think what's gonna be really, really exciting and attractive design. And we're also, even though federal funds may have disappeared before our eyes, we've also incorporated a huge number of green building features with hopes for some incentives that even if they're not there, we're still gonna be building really green buildings. So we're using heat pumps and we believe it'll be Earth Advantage Platinum, which will be for our company, the first time we've reached that, that's the highest level we can reach for our building. So the bottom line is we're really proud of this opportunity, we're really proud of the team, we're gonna be really proud to be a part of the Manzanita community.
She asked a couple more highlights, I promise I only got a couple more slides here. General site highlights. We talked about open space, so I just wanted to make sure that we called out that the site actually has 62% of its full site dedicated to open space. 41% of that is dedicated to natural open space, and that would be the area north of the project you see highlighted here. And then 21% of that is the active open space, as Keith did a good job detailing where that is throughout the site, green spaces, play areas, green spaces and tree along the back as well. So 62% overall for open space. That's the central parking, like I said, and then we have a large community room. That's meant for the residents, the nonprofit partner, and any of their guests. Two more slides here. It's important to list some of the opportunities that this project brings. I think this is where I certainly love to get involved. I know Ben does, in talking with Rick Hankis and Jim Pence, they are excited about this. And even talking with city staff, they understand what this project means holistically for the city. There is a need for affordable housing in Manzanita, and I like to call Ben the knight in shining armor sometimes. He's coming into some of these places and really bringing some much-needed housing. There's a public-private partnership here needed for infrastructure for the city of Manzanita, as it is growing to meet that need. The legislative funding for a city waterline extension is tied to the unlocking of this housing. So what I like to see is I love the idea of watching a property owner, developer and city, putting forth a request to the state and says, hey, we need this money to unlock the housing that's desperately needed, them fighting for that and then getting that money. So that's the result of that waterline, I think, that Scott was talking about, as that comes through Classic Street to serve this area. The city and the state recognizes what's on the tail end of that waterline, and that's this project. And certainly fostering housing and living environments to meet all of the needs. I think we all can say that we want to fight for that. That's all families of different sizes. There's one, two, and three-bedroom apartments here. It's all incomes, right? So this fills that need for that 60% AMI. And then age, taste and lifestyle, this is a pretty neat development to be able to kind of check that box. So I promised to be short, and we are all here, those that have presented and others, to be able to offer answers as best we can to all your questions. Chair, would you like me to call on folks that have their hand up, or is that something that you could call on them and I can respond?
If you would like to call on people, however, I want to limit the conversation at this moment to questions from the commission. And then, once the commission is satisfied, we'll open it up to public comments from the people who are here with us today.
Sure. I see Lee with a hand up.
Thank you Jerry, and thanks for your presentation. I'm a little curious about something that hasn't been brought up. You're advertising this, excuse me, you're applying for this through a name of Manzanita Pines. I've seen as many as 15 different sites that show it as Spruce Point. So would you like to clarify that?
Sure, no problem, and I thank you for your attention to detail to see that. That was a marketing name change between the time that we had submitted Manzanita Pines and the presentation here tonight. So I felt to try and keep Manzanita Pine since that was presented on the application through most of our slides. As we collectively put this together, there's a bunch of teams, so they have, some of their slides would have the new name on it, but that's it, it's the same project.
Thank you.
Bert, can I call on you?
Yes, thanks Jerry, and thanks for the team's work and presentation. Could you clarify which of the two buildings are the ones that you're requesting the additional height on the site plan, please?
Absolutely, and I'm sorry, we had this highlighted and for some reason it fell off. So it's 50, it's only half of the building, so it's three out of six. And it would be building A, building B, if you can see my cursor circling those, and building E at the northernmost portion.
Got it, okay.
Okay, thank you. I see Steve.
All right, thank you for being here, and thank you for all the, the Planning Commission for being-
We're going out of order here, we need to, we need to just stick to the commissioners.
Yep, we'll, we'll take public comments in a moment.
Chair did mention that, I'm sorry, I will, I will pass on Stephen, go to John.
Thank you. I have a que, you were talking about the three buildings that you chose to go three stories with and are asking for the additional three feet. Kudos for going with a market look in your buildings. I like the nine-foot ceilings. However, yeah, I get that. You can, if you'd go back to the site plan.
This one?
Yeah, that would be great.
Sure.
Honestly, I, I'm inclined to give you the extra three feet because of the market look that you're shooting for. I especially am happy to do that on building E and building A. I think building B, you're doing a disservice to the people on the east side of your project. Or I, I would like to see you see if you could at least take the six one-bedroom units and move them to an area, I would recommend the east side of building E. That, it's irrelevant because it's tucked back into the pines, so to speak, or spruces, whatever they are. So I don't know if you're willing to do that, but I would, I would say that would be a good condition for approval of the extra three feet. I don't think, there were several comments from the people, written comments from the people on Clipper Lane regarding both parking along that east side and the building B height. And you really are right in a couple of those people's backyard with that building B. I don't think the parking is really relevant, because I think you can screen that with no problem. But again, if you, for instance, if you took building A and made it similar to your building E and then took the little two-bedroom or one-bedroom piece and put it on the east edge of the east end of building. Anyway, that's not my problem to solve. My issue is you're right up against the property line on the east side with your 37 feet four inches. I'll throw that back to the group.
Thank you for your comments, John. I understand, I believe where you're coming from on that, so our group can roundtable on it as well. Brad, you haven't had a chance, how are you sir?
Good, thank you. And I commend the development team for taking on and embracing the site and this project, serving a significant need for the community. Couple of questions though, one for clarification, but let me first kind of draft off of what John was saying, and to a certain degree, Bert. On the height of the buildings from a massing standpoint, did the design team look either at those three buildings or overall and consider a different roof line that would still deliver the nine-foot interior ceiling heights that you're striving for, which I think is a positive by the way? But that would also bring down the scale of the massing?
Thanks for that question. Yeah, thanks for that question, and we actually did, but I'm gonna let Keith and Skylar talk about that. They're the professionals on the design. There is a limiting code that we can bring up and explain that, so go ahead Keith.
Yeah.
I'm gonna let Skylar start on that one, he did most of that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we definitely did look at a lot of things. I mean, I think one of the things is just about, you know, affordable housing and, you know, like, what are the means and methods to make housing affordable? And so, we, I mean, we certainly looked at roof forms where, you know, that top floor would be integrated into, into the roof line and have dormers and things or vaulted ceilings. And ultimately, you know, it was like, there's, we could do that. We can do all sorts of things, we could have flat roofs or things if the zoning code allowed. But that was gonna add complexity and cost, and that it would be better just for the, you know, the project overall if we could keep the construction simple, keep the construction, you know, affordable to ultimately make the housing work.
And then just to kind of add on top of that, Brad, there's, we are at three-on-12 roof pitches. That's what's setting the height front to back, and so that's pretty much as low as we can go before we go under.
When you're-
I did just add, pardon me Brett. I was just gonna add that a significant amount of ink was spilled on this topic, trying to find, you know, the most, the best solution, right? Acknowledging the challenge and then trying to find the best solution from a design standpoint, a constructability standpoint. I, we really did work through this from a variety of lenses.
These two elevations that you're showing obviously kind of break up the envelope or the skin with materiality. I know this, we're not gonna get into design whatsoever, so I'll try and stay away from that. But is the intent from a scale or a massing standpoint with that added height to try and break up the envelope to kind of bring this more down in scale? Or are these accurate as kind of in the schematic or whatever phase you're in?
Yeah, no, for sure. These are representative of, you know, the design direction. And yeah, it was, you know, to break it up horizontally, so we have a two-story base and then have, you know, this third story that has a different material, you know, a darker material, so it kind of fades a little bit. The base is planning on being a fiber cement shake material, just to kind of go coastal. And the clubhouse will have like an actual cedar shake material. And then we also have bays, like a lot of bays on the, on the longer sides of the building. So yeah, there's like a distinct effort to break up the massing, both like vertically and horizontally.
And then lastly on this note, and then I'll hand it off. I thought maybe it was Jerry who said two buildings, then it shifted to three. Can you just clarify, are we, is it three buildings or two?
It, it, it is three. There's five residential buildings and then one clubhouse for a total of six buildings. Three of those buildings will, are planned to be three stories and are requesting that additional three feet.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Brad. I'm gonna go to Frank. You haven't had a chance to, to quiz us yet a little bit. So uh, please, uh, how can we help with any questions?
Yeah, well, first I wanted to just say that I think leaving the taller buildings on the, on both ends is, is more like an anchor. Um, I think it would look really odd if you took the one-story or the smaller building and stuck it on the end next to the much taller building. Uh, but that's just my aesthetics. Uh, can you do me a favor and just explain? Because people will do the math. Nine-foot ceilings times three is twenty-seven feet. Now you're going another ten. Explain just so everybody understands why you need ten more feet off of, you know, when you do the math.
You wanna go for that, Skylar and Keith?
Sure. Um, so we're assuming, you know, the ground floor cannot be right at the grade level. It needs to be slightly raised up. So that's, there's six inches there. Uh, these are slab-on-grade buildings, so we're, we're already trying to like bring, if these were conventional crawl spaces, we'd need another couple of feet of height there. So slab-on-grade is helping us get as low as possible. You know, the structure of the floor is another foot at each level. And then um, and then lastly, zoning code requires a, a minimum of a three-twelve pitch. Um, so we, the, the roofs are as, as shallow as they can be. And so, but as, you know, as they go up, they're, they're just getting, um, so, so yeah, we've got an additional, let's say, two and a half feet of structure and then, and then the rest is just roof height.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll go back. Uh, wait, um, the chair hasn't had a chance to ask some questions, so Karen?
Um, I, I like to play cleanup, so go, uh, go through the rest of them first. Thanks.
Fair enough. Uh, as every good chair does, likes to play cleanup. Uh, Lee, let's go back to you.
Thank you, Jerry. You gentlemen have a very compelling argument, I must say. I gotta give you a lot of credit. Um, coming from a code enforcement background, working for a large jurisdiction, I did inspections for thirty years. And I can honestly say that a significant number, I'm not gonna give you a number, but a significant number of those buildings had eight-foot ceilings. A few had nine, but that was a luxury. I also had an opportunity to sit on an appeal board for several years in a large jurisdiction. And appeals were based on, they were considered variances, if you will. And a variance or an appeal was granted on the basis that there wasn't any other opportunity to make something work. And what I see you presenting here is something that you want, not something that you need to make this work. I understand the aesthetic value and I can really appreciate that people are gonna feel better in a nine-foot ceiling environment. But quite honestly, as a planning commissioner, I have a hard time. Um, I have a hard time considering your, your argument for the additional three feet. I'll just leave it at that.
I, I appreciate that. Um, I guess the, the comment would be that's um, the reason that we're going that PUD route, right? As Scott Frigginassi said ahead of this, is that we are placing things out there um, different than what you would be doing in a variance, right? To show the nexus of why a variance would be approved. This is really a PUD, which we're just trying to, to explain the why and why this is important for the future residents there to have that feeling of a market, right? They're, they're getting a subsidy and there's, there are folks out there that um, appreciate those subsidies in different ways. Some of them feel um, a little bit concerned that, oh my gosh, I'm getting this, right? And is it going to be something less than market? And um, Home First has done a great job throughout the state, doing what they can, investing in to give them that feeling of market as much as they can. So I appreciate where you're coming from. Hey, what's your nexus? Have you, have you given the compelling argument? And I would say if we were going for that, that, what I call the V word, which we're not. If, but I, as a PUD, we're just, we're hoping for consideration, recognizing, yes, there is something that we can do. It's just not the best case scenario.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go back to John.
Thanks, Jerry. Um, I just want to clarify something. Could you throw the slide, the site planning slide back up? Or, um, I am not, um, again, I understand your logic behind the nine-foot ceilings and I actually agree with you. Uh, I would like to see these go with a nine-foot ceiling. I understand the, the need for structure, you know, ceiling, the floor structure. I understand all that. Um, what I don't understand is why you have chosen to put the three-story building right up against the Clipper Lane people's uh, house on the east side. When you have all the room to the north with the open space, that you could uh, put it up there. Or, you know, I, it, it, my opinion is you don't need to put all of Building B up there. Um, you just need to, however you want to do it. I mean, I can explain it in twenty different ways, but you basically take Building E and put it to the south and take Building A and B and put it up in the north. That'll, that'll give you about twenty feet uh, less of a, maybe more. I don't know. Your, your architects, Keith and Skylar could probably tell you exactly how much further away from the Clipper Lane people that would put you. Um, and you would, I, I understand also that you have topography issues up there and you're trying to minimize your construction costs. Although if you split Building E into two buildings, you could raise the one to the east and make it a little uh, less onerous on the earthwork. I'm just, again, throwing this out there, but um, Frank sort of mischaracterized glomming a little piece on there, and that's not what I'm talking about. Uh, I'm talking about designing the site to minimize the impact on the Clipper Lane people. I, I think the open space hides a lot of the, the sins. I don't believe um, having a three-story building up against Loop Road uh, or Loop Lane, whatever we're gonna call that, um, presents a huge issue. I'm willing to um, uh, reduce the front yard setback um, uh, to accommodate that. The, the, I mean, you have so little of that corner of Building E in the uh, setbacks different, the, the difference between ten and twenty is more or less irrelevant. So um, again, um, you're being a really good uh, developer and you have the needs of your clientele's at heart. I appreciate that. Um, try to be, oh, give a little bit back to the Clipper Lane people, is what I'm asking.
I, I hear that and I, I, I believe where you're coming from um, is representing of that as a planning commissioner should. I, we did have some site constraints um, with some topography. I, I think uh, as Mr. Prey said, that there is a lot, been a lot of ink spilled on this topic and trying to, you know, there's always, you know, ten ways to skin a cat, or is it nine? I don't know which one it is. But we looked at this a bunch and I think this is the uh, most effective one that the team came up with. Um, but uh, we're, we can continue to talk about what this means and, and potentially what a uh, modified condition could look like to, to be able to accommodate something there.
Well, I, I would be more willing to um, approve your additional three feet. I'm inclined to do that anyway, but um, because again, I like where you're coming from. But um, if, if we could condition that on giving the Clipper Lane people an additional twenty feet um, just in that southeast corner, I think you would uh, win some goodwill.
Can I just speak to this point a little bit for a second?
Sure, Skylar, go ahead.
Yeah, just, so the space to the east of Building E, part of the reason why we are not utilizing that is that there's like a really sharp um, slope up from, from there. And so I think, you know, as Jerry mentioned earlier, this is helping to like shield the, you know, the Clipper folks um, from the site. It's also, you know, like, if we were to develop that area, we would have to, you know, excavate a big portion of um, that kind of dune area. And then also, that's, you know, the more that we're recreating that area, we're just, it's affecting a lot of the vegetation that goes back there. And so um, you know, part of this is trying to like, leave some of that steep topography, which is helping to leave some of that existing vegetation. And so um, you know, this is part of the reason why we've, we've ended up with this. And we're also kind of trying to, you know, the center of the project is that clubhouse and that community space. And so we're also kind of, and this is not going counter to what you're talking about. But um, you know, we have this one-story commu- community space and plaza and then we're kind of stepping up to two-story buildings um, in the center there and then going out to three. Um, and, and that Building B in that southeast corner, you know, we aren't all the way up against um, you know, this, the setback. We are, we are set back a little bit more than what the minimum is uh, already. But um, but yeah, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying and, and, but it, we, we are, you know, as has been mentioned, we've gone through a lot of iterations and, and this is um, trying to um, trying to flow with, with the land and um, not, not just level the whole thing.
I, I get it. Uh, probably made that same argument to two dozen planning commissions through the years. Um, but I also know that if you wanted to, you could make this happen. Uh, and I don't think you, I don't, I think you could do it without uh, harming uh, any of your uh, you know, your, your finances. The construction costs shouldn't change that much. I do understand the topography. I understand there's a, a high spot back in the uh, north. I guess we'll call it northeast corner. But again, if you took the Building E and made it two buildings, you could make one tall, you could raise one uh, uh, the finished floor of one, uh, the one on the uh, east side. Um, anyway, um, I'd probably beat that one to death and Karen's going, we need to end this. So um, I will leave it at that.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Um, who do we all, who do we have? Uh, I see Bert with his hand up.
Yeah, thanks very much, Jerry. Uh, just for clarification, all, the proposal is for all the buildings to have nine-foot ceilings. Is that correct?
Well, the proposal was to increase the building height blanketly across that. Uh, we would be willing to entertain if we wanted, if there was something specific that said maybe fifty percent of the buildings or something like that, then we can work with that and maybe do some design work to accommodate.
But the, the goal would be that uh, uh, it's equal for everyone to experience that nine-foot ceiling.
Oh, correct.
Okay, and so the reason uh, uh, is it, you, you had mentioned there are just these three that need that height increase? And is that because of how we calculate the topography and the average grade and all that kind of stuff?
It, it factors into it, but more so the, the density, right? To get the density and what is needed of sixty units, that was in the housing analysis.
Right.
But I think you're saying, Jerry, that Buildings D and C are only two stories, so they're, they're comfortably under the, it's only the three-story buildings that have the issues.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thanks, Ben. That's how I work as a team.
Okay, perhaps you could uh, bring up the landscape plan? Uh, there's a more, well, this, this illustrates it, I guess. And, and there's a, a group of trees that are illustrated uh, on Building B, I guess, uh, that would be to the east. Are those existing trees or new trees or?
There's a combination of both. Uh, unfortunately Laura was not able to be here tonight. She had a family emergency. Uh, but if Skylar or Keith can speak to that, but I believe there's a combination of a lot of existing trees. There is many existing trees between us and Clipper Court, right? And then some new trees as well.
Uh, it is a little bit more new than existing on that side. We are, um, Skylar, you kind of mentioned before, we're a little bit further setback on B than just the minimum. I think we're at like twenty-two, twenty-three feet off the property line. But just from a construction perspective, um, those trees immediately adjacent to Building B would be new ones, um, right up in there.
Okay, and then your separation between Building A and B is that ten feet or?
I think we were at fifteen. Let's see. Can check that here in a second. Eighteen feet right now.
All right, and it, there's a, obviously, you know, proximity to windows and stuff, but could that be compressed a little bit?
It's possible. Um, there's, we, you know, we have fire separation requirements as well that we're navigating through there as well. For having windows, right?
Yeah. Uh, okay, that's uh, kind of my questions on that. I, I hate to come back to the Loop Road thing, but I'm completely confused on it still. And uh, uh, the staff reports uh, has something about the uh, road being improved to the south entrance. The drawings illustrate uh, what appears to be a, a road improved past the uh, north entrance. And so wha- what's exactly going on?
Sure. Happy to explain that. Um, and great question. Again, you guys are looking at all the details that you should and that we enjoy that. So here's Loop Road, uh, both in plan view and in a rendering. And you can see how it does go past that northern entrance. Now, this is to accommodate fire apparatus turnaround. So this was a direct conversation after our uh, pre-application conference, that they needed that to be able to pull in, back out, to accommodate um, all the EMS services.
Okay, but, but the road will be paved up to that point?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then I guess the, the second clarification is the future connection of Meadow Drive to Loop Road. Uh, that is not part of your application. Is, is that a thousand feet, twenty, two-hundred feet?
Yeah, happy to talk on that. Um, I know a little bit about that, but again, I don't want to overspeak because I'm not the developer of that property. But um, to my knowledge, there is no uh, plan to connect Loop Road and Meadows or else they would have been named the same road. There is a plan, I believe, to connect Loop Road into the development at maybe a, a southern sweeping road uh, next to the UGB line. So um, these two roads would not connect.
Okay, so that'll be a, a, a future application to the commission for that particular project.
Certainly, uh, that is not our project and I'm only, I want to preface, what I'm saying is only from hearsay and, and people that I've talked to, right? I, I haven't seen any plans for that, but
Staff, staff
With the property owners.
Yeah, I, I understand, Jerry. Staff could probably answer that question for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, those are the, uh, questions I have. I do want to compliment uh, the design team on the uh, aesthetic approach of the material and color choices that are represented, at least in this uh, presentation. Uh, and the effort to, to get it to uh, uh, feel like Manzanita in terms of the palette and the textures and stuff. So uh, good job on that one.
Thanks, sir. Um, I see here, is it Tom? Can I hand up?
Yeah, it is. Uh, this may be a dumb question, but that's because I'm the one person on the commission without an architectural or building background. But it, is there some reason you can't swap Buildings B and C? If, I mean, if the problem that everyone's speaking to is that B is too tall for the privacy and aesthetics of the people to the east, but that's because it's three stories and C is two. Why can't you switch those two and, and get rid of that height problem?
I can speak that to a little bit. And to answer your question is, you could, right? So it's not a, you can't, but I just wanted to also explain what we're trying to do to accommodate the best that we can, the eastern neighbors. There, the, the property topo map actually is higher here and then it kind of comes down to zero and then it bumps up to fifteen feet difference between here and there. So these areas over here are actually lower than these areas. So C might actually appear to be taller for these folks, right? Than actually how B represents against that slope. Because there's a, there's a, you know, a large slope that goes up the, from, from what will be Loop Road to Clipper Court. So you, that's one consideration. So you, that's one consideration. The other consideration, I believe Skylar brought up and, and maybe Frank mentioned on that too, is just the general massing of, hey, we have a, a one-story clubhouse. Then we have two apartments at two stories and then you have three apartments on the other end. So it's, it's just a very welcoming into that open space, right? So that feel, you don't have a taller one in the middle where the playground and everything else is. So it's more design consideration than it is a requirement.
Well, even I can see the aesthetics of, of that, I'm just trying to sort this out. And can you also tell me, uh, uh, because I can't tell from these pictures, how, how far is it from building B to the house to the immediate east? And, and what's in between there? Is it, is it, are there trees now?
Yeah, it's thickly forested, um, between the two.
There's trees now, Jerry, um, and we're at least twenty-two feet, um, back to our setback property line, which is that white line on the screen there. Um, and so I don't know what their setback is, you know, how far back their, you know, the closest building is. But just looking at it, you know, on paper, it's further than that. So, you know, I'd say we're probably at least fifty feet apart from there, if not more.
And, and so what we're talking about is they'll be looking at the top of a building over the trees. And, and, and is there also, I, three feet doesn't sound like much to me, but I guess with the angle of a setting sun, that could be significant in terms of shading that property? Or, or is that inconsequential?
The shading will be, yeah, setting sun, I, I, is not as much on that property. It'd be strictly to west. Yeah, it's, I don't think it's going to make, three feet doesn't make a difference per se from a sunsetting perspective, I don't think.
And there will be portions of that roof line that you will not see because of the trees being taller than the roof line, right? So it's not the whole roof line will tower over those trees. Um, I would say that you would have peek-a-boo views, right? For lack of a better term, uh, through some of those trees.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, getting to Brad, I see your hand back up.
I'll try and be super quick here, a couple of very pedestrian clarification questions. Can you, um, the area to the north, the tree area, the dune area, is that going, is that intended to be inactive? Open space?
It is, it's supposed, it's intended to be left completely as is, as natural open space.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And then the other, um, can you also just clarify or confirm, across the sixty units, they're all intended to have nine-foot ceilings, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair, I think we are coming to you. Oh, Tom, your hand is still up, did you have another question? Sorry, you're muted. Okay, he's good, thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, so I have a few questions that, um, I, I, I know that it, it looks like on the plans, there were, um, some spaces identified for EV charging. Is that intended to be part of this project?
I believe it is, yes, I'll let, uh, Skylar talk to the code for that.
Uh, um, the, uh, state code requires twenty percent of the parking to be, um, EV-ready. So it's not necessarily, um, you know, there aren't necessarily twenty percent right away, but there's the infrastructure for twenty percent. And I believe the intention is to have, um, initially a couple of EV spaces and then the rest of the twenty percent would be EV-ready.
Okay, and I didn't see ADA, um, accessible parking spaces. I'm assuming that the city is on that and staff will make sure that those, um, get properly positioned.
Yes, we have, um, several.
Okay, and are, are, um, accessible dwelling units in each one of the buildings or are they masked in, in one?
There are three, um, type A, um, accessible units and they are, two are in building C and one is in building D. Um, so we are trying to kind of keep those around in that central kind of clubhouse area so that, you know, those folks, um, will have like easy access to, um, the, the main amenities.
Okay, that's, that's very thoughtful. Um, the, I, this is just a really lame question, but, um, the, I'm concerned about the storm swales and children, um, a, a playground right next to the, where, you know, a pool is going to be evident for a while. And I just wanted to know what kind of.
Right.
Safety conditions you're looking at?
We've had a lot of discussion about that on the team and initially we did have a fence around it. And, but then talking to, you know, um, Ralph and, uh, Mackenzie with civil engineering, the, the infiltration of the site, because there's so much sand and, you know, in this coastal area is so high um, that there's really, no, no matter what the like storm event, there's, you know, there's, the, there won't be any standing water ever. And so there was kind of a question of like, okay, we could fence this off and have this be like, you know, a, a dedicated storm area. Or, you know, just because there really isn't a concern of having standing water there, um, kind of having that be kind of a flex space that it is, um, you know, it does have grass, it is a kind of an extension of this active area. But it also is managing, um, storm. So it's not very deep, it's only, you know, a couple of feet. So it really isn't like, uh, it really isn't a pond and it, it's never, um, intended to have standing water in it.
Will it have any, um, ground cover or planting in there to help absorb that water and keep, and, you know, make it less like a playground area?
Yeah, the, the current intention is to have, um, is to have grass. Uh, so, um, we were kind of seeing it as kind of a dual-use area. But again, because there is no, um, because of the extremely high infiltration rates, um, there, there shouldn't ever be standing water there.
Shouldn't?
And well, I, maybe, maybe I'll speak, let Ralph speak to it, um, uh.
You might be surprised here on the, you know, here on the coast, what, where water accumulates.
We have the similar facility over by Classic Streets, just towards the south end of Classic Street that takes pretty much everything that's been developed for the first, uh, several phases of the Highlands Development. And, you know, that's probably about, you know, thirty feet across by thirty feet on the bottom. And we've had residents tell us, and actually Jim, the owner, has told us that even in the heaviest rain, when there was four inches of rain in the day, he went and looked at it and there was less than an inch of water at the bottom.
Okay. Um, let me think, what else was there? I had a long list and you've crossed a lot of things off already, just in the discussion. Um, oh, just the, the, um, the trees, I didn't see a, um, a particular plant, planting plan, but will you, is it your intention to put, um, mature or fairly mature trees in on the east side of building B? Or, you know, is it going to take twenty years for those to grow? Or what you have intended?
I think that the team will have to look at what has been intended from the construction budget, but we can, uh, look to them to direct them to get as ma- as mature trees as we can. Um, sometimes, um, you know, ma- maybe instead of, uh, doing one-inch caliper, they're two-inch caliper, right? So doubling that to help the, that, or also making sure that we can find trees that, um, are, grow more rapid than other trees, uh, so we can look towards that. But I, I don't have the exact tree, um, species or size in front of me today. But I understand, um, trying to get that, uh, grown up and as thick as possible or I guess thicker than it already is across the property line, it's pretty thick there. Um, but doing that is definitely, um, our intentions and the neighborly thing to do.
Looking at the landscape plans, um, they're primarily conifers that would be going in there as well. So they're not deciduous trees that would be dropping leaves in the winter and just opening up more of a view. It would be, you know, permanent protection.
Okay. Um, lighting in the parking lot, it, are you intending to have lights on poles or is it all going to be, um, uh, bullet, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, the, the low, low lamps or are there going to be, um, you know, full-size lights on poles?
I think I'll have to, go ahead, Skylar.
Yeah, the, um, the intention is to have poles, um, but they're all, you know, dark sky compliant and, um, there will be like bollards in the rest of the site, like along pedestrian paths. But, um, but yeah, the, the intention is to have poles, they'll be shielded, so they're, you know, very directional. So they are really aiming at the, the parking, they're not just kind of generally dispersed lighting.
They will be shielding the, um, properties to the east?
They will be shielded, yes.
Okay, they won't see any light at all?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I'm going to hold you to that.
I think we got to be clear that they won't see any of the light bulb, but you, they would see light shining down on other areas, right? So.
It will not shine on their properties.
Correct.
It will not shine on their properties.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm going to hold you to.
And, and we've submitted a, you know, we'll submit a photometric diagram showing where those, you know, where that light is falling and stuff based on the pictures.
Okay, um, I think overall that, um, you've done a really admirable job. And, you know, we don't have a design review for this kind of a project. But, um, as a citizen, not necessarily as a, you know, a person on this commission, I would really hope that this development, when it's finished, is something that every citizen of Manzanita would be proud to call home. Um, and not just the folks that have limited resources. I, I would hope that it will be, um, something that will last, um, aesthetically and that, um, you know, there's a really bad word associated with projects that I, I, that it, it looks like you've done a lot of, um, design work to prevent that from being an issue for us here. And I just, I really, um, I applaud your efforts in that way. And I hope that the, um, the building will be, um, will last a long time, that everything will look good for a very long time, and I know that's your, your purpose. That was my editorial comment, pick it or leave it. Uh, I would be not as inclined to support, um, the additional three inches on building B. Um, but I would, you know, um, defer to what the rest of the commission determines on that. And I think that's, that's the end of my comments. So at this point, um, unless any of the commissioners have additional questions or comments, I'd like to open it to the public. And, uh, if you have already said to the public, if you've already submitted a letter, we have read them, we've seen them and we appreciate them. So it's not necessary to reiterate what you've already sent us. But I would, um, like to hear from people who have not already submitted, um, a response. And I'd like you to limit your question or your comments, if you can, to about three minutes. And if you agree with something that someone else has already said, please mention that and then move on so that we don't last too much more into our evening. Okay, um, Leila, if you want to let people in, that would be great.
Uh, so Steve Albrekson, I'm sorry if I butchered your name, Steve.
Uh, no, that's fine, uh, can you turn my video back on, please? You've disabled my abilities there. All right, thank you, um, so I'm going to ask Karen Burton, Frank and Lee to grant me the opportunity, Tom and Brad, if I missed somebody, um, I'm sorry, um, I want to clarify some of the discussion tonight about, uh, the property there on, um, the building B. And I want to clarify some of the property that's on the north side. And so what I'm going to ask is for you to allow me to share a short video that I, I did it as a public comment. And it's fairly concise, I don't know if anybody had seen it yet, but it's going to, uh, bring light, it's going to be real-life pictures of what's going on. And I live on Clipper Court, I know this property, uh, very well. The one that you're, my kids and I have played in it for many years. And, um, and I can show you firsthand what, what this place is. So if you grant me this ability to share this video, I will clear up those questions you have right now.
How long is your video?
Well, the video is actually seven minutes.
Nope.
We don't have to watch all, we can just watch the first five minutes and it'll, it'll, the questions that we've talked about is what I want to share. Because it's, it specifically addresses what the questions that the commission has brought up, what the, and, and it's going to share with you real, exact reality of what the situation is. We've seen a lot of AI drawings that don't represent neighborhoods in it. It's just this, it, it has no comparison. If you want to do a drawing, you have to be at the comparison next into it. There's no property lines in those AI drawings, there's no other houses, so we don't really know because there's nothing to compare it to. In order to know how something big it is, you have to have that comparison. I'm using my time and I'm asking to share this video and I'm waiting to have it shared. And all I need to do is show me that link on the bottom and I'll pull it up.
You've already gone your three minutes.
Okay, so.
So make, make your point, are, are you in favor?
Show, let me show the video. I'll clear your, 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 because you provided false data tonight. It's totally false and I'm going to sh- clear it up for you. Let me do, I've sat here for two hours and eight minutes. I've listened to a presentation for one hour. You're not going to let a public comment do this for three minutes? Not five percent? Karen, you're the president of this chair. The point of this journey right now is public comment, public comment. The public hasn't allowed any comment. It's going to shed light on what we're doing and you're blocking it. Why? It, why, it's going to bring light to the truth, Karen, you're blocking the truth.
Can I make a comment here, Karen, as the city planner?
Please.
So, um, from my perspective, I think all, uh, one hundred percent of everyone's input is needed in this and I respect the platform of the video being shared. Um, part of the issue with having a, a video being shared in, as a public comment is that not everyone has the ability to see that as, at the same time. Although this is, uh, that this is, um, given to everyone. So my recommendation would be to submit your video as part of the record.
God, it's pictures, it's just pictures, all right?
That's even better.
It's like you presented in a thing, in your slideshow, it's pictures.
Perfect.
Yo.
So my recommendation would be to do your public comment, uh, verbally and request that your, your video be put into the record as public comment so everyone can view that at any time they want to. That would be my recommendation as your, as your planner procedurally, just because we don't typically allow videos to be given during a public com- comment period, only because we don't, we haven't had this type of technology in the past. So, but that's up to you as a commissioner and how you want to do that.
I'll just note too, for the record, that we did receive a copy of this video, but it was after the twelve o'clock deadline, which is when we send out public comment that we received today. So that will be sent out to the commission and then posted on the city's webpage as part of, uh, the record for this meeting today.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments?
So yes, there's, uh, Sarisa Albrekson.
Yes, hello, thank you for, uh, letting me comment today. Um, so I do have, uh, quite a few questions for you guys. Um, we are the landowners on Clipper Court. Um, we are adjacent to the current proposal, I think it's building B, um, that you guys actually were discussing. Uh, so here's some of my concerns. The streets, the three-story building seems out of step with the current housing standards in Manzanita. If allowed, we feel it will set a precedent for future builds and could reshape the look and feel of Manzanita, especially a budding up a three-story building next to properties that are zoned, single-family dwellings or manufactured home, which our neighborhood is. The relaxation of setbacks, please call it what it is. The relaxation of setbacks, please call it what it is. The proposal is asking for significant setback variances from twenty feet to ten, once again, abutting next to manufactured housing. This is not appropriate. Number three, the relaxation of parking ratio. I will segue into my next question with this. The proposal is requesting a one-point-six parking space unit reduction from the normal standard of two. To understand the real impact of this ratio, we need to ask the city planners, what is the maximum number of occupancies that are currently allowed and has housing standards for studios? Two bedrooms and three bedrooms. I'd like an answer to that question. As a public health nurse who has worked in this community for the last sixteen years, I can tell you that three-bedroom apartments can house multiple couples, each with their own car. This relaxation is not appropriate for the community that drives. In the plans, much of the parking is facing east, creating light pollution for those of us who live in adjacent properties. It appears that the parking lots will be lower grade, looked like three-feet retaining wall, which doesn't appear to be sufficient. How is the city going to mitigate this concern of light pollution? Also, Pine Ridge will be experiencing a disproportionate amount of light pollution as tenants exit onto Nakarney Road. How will this, how will you mitigate this for those people living in Pine Ridge? Number six, additional concerns about light pollution are the use of street lamps, front porch lights. How will this concern, how will this, how will you address this concern? Number seven, the placement of the buildings appear to leave open space in the northern end, which is the most private and uninhabited section of the land. Why not spread the buildings out using the northern end of the lot, giving residents more space and more beauty? Number eight, by including the northern end of the complex into the plans, the developer will also help to reduce the fire hazards presented in this area. The new fire map put out by the Oregon Department of Forestry has listed this as an urban interface, which is considered a very high-risk area. I encourage the city to review the recommendations for fire mitigation in the urban interface and apply those standards to this building. Number nine, how much water is needed to operate a sixty-unit building? Does the city have adequate water source to maintain this development? We currently have bouts of low water pressure already in the summer months in our complex. Number ten, since the start of the development in the Highlands, we have experienced vibrations in our homes during the pounding of sand and fear of what the effects of such close pro, of this pounding in such close proximity. What assurance and recourse will the city provide for our homes if our homes are damaged due to this seismic pounding? Number eleven, who's responsible for the continued care of the vegetation after all the native plants have been removed? Number twelve, explain how this is affordable housing. What is the AMI you're basing your affordable housing on? Manzanita or Tillamook County? Number thirteen, what's to stop Portlanders from renting these units and subleasing them and using them as second homes? I also want to add to that, Manzanita doesn't have a shortage of housing. Manzanita has made the decision to divert their housing to short-term rentals. Number fourteen, how will the children in this complex catch the bus? Exiting onto Nakarney Road is treacherous with all the transfer station traffic, the state park traffic and other traffic. Will the proposal have a turnaround for the school bus or the ability to loop around so the children don't have to venture out onto Nakarney Road? And so parents aren't pulled over on the side of the road waiting for the bus or dropping their children off. Number fifteen, this location is very lacking in access to resources. You, I keep hearing that this is all about, uh, reduced, uh, low-income housing. The bus stop is on one oh one. It's a dangerous walk from Nakarney to get there. How is the city planning on providing safe ways for people to travel to access public transportation? Especially if the expectation is people in the complex don't own multiple vehicles. Number sixteen, where is the Loop Road going? It's still not clear to me after this conversation this evening, where, where, where is this road really going? Is Nakarney Road the only exit? Number seventeen, I believe many people in our community would rather see dispersed affordable housing. I believe this was actually part of a discussion, a larger discussion. This appears to place all the affordable housing as far away as possible from the heart of Manzanita and Niaconny. Is this proposal reflecting the idea of dispersed housing? Number eighteen, where are the residents going to be allowed to smoke? I have visited many, uh, affordable housing units from Tillamook all the way up to Nahalem. Where are the people going to smoke? This is a very, very big concern of mine. And number nineteen, where are the pets going to be defecating? Currently, lots of, uh, low-income housing people have pets. Lots of developments have pets. Where is that accommodated for?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a manager on site? That was, I've got one more last question. Will there be managers on site? And my very last one is what is the proposal for fencing to mitigate light pollution? Trespassers and burms? Because I can tell you, we are going to lose a lot of privacy. And how are you going to remedy that? And visitor parking?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other hands up? Linda Kestner?
Hi, everybody. Um, so I want to say I'm Linda Kestner, Manzanita resident. Um, workforce housing has long been a serious concern of mine. And I'm speaking to you today as a private citizen and not as a representative of the city or of the Public Advisory Steering Committee. I would like to advocate strongly for the commission to consider allowing the height of the units as proposed. Um, having these units will be essential to our community, but having space is not enough. We need to think about the dignity and pride of place the residents can have in these very small units. Once you apply the state mandated twenty percent variance, we're talking about three feet. That small increase in headroom will be the difference maker, creating spaces that are airy and a comfortable place to live. Our local workers deserve that. This application is happening in advance of the housing ordinance revisions the commission will be considering and proposing to the council in a few short months. And things will be changing in any case. Things must change if we want Manzanita to be a diverse, equitable and inclusive place to live. This need not be a precedent setting if height is tied to affordability. That's all I have to say. I thank the commissioners for your work on this important issue and for listening to my concerns today. Have a good night.
Uh, Emily, Emily, I should know how to say your last name, but please go ahead.
All right, thanks. It's Aktedian. Um, I submitted written, written comments, so I won't, um, repeat too much of what I said, but I want to thank everyone for the presentation and the information regarding this development. Um, I want to reiterate some of what's been expressed. I do live in the neighborhood adjacent to this development. And, um, I think that there are impacts of that three-story building right next to that, um, southeast corner. Um, so I appreciate that that's been brought up tonight. Um, I also want to address safety concerns for this development. I'm really excited that the city is looking at this proposal to have affordable housing in our community. I think it's much needed and I'm very supportive of it. And my interest is in gaining, um, character and scale that are appropriate for the development and consideration for the residents that will be living there. Um, I noticed that in the existing plans, a lot, the, the largest buildings, um, open up onto pretty large parking areas. And the communal space is cut off by parking areas. So I'm really interested in connectivity between the site. How are residents getting between buildings to visit their neighbors? How are children getting to that place space? Um, are we considering that, um, families include not just young children who want a playground, but teenagers and people of all ages who need to recreate and need to have connectivity, um, to the site in general, to recreation opportunities, to the city? Um, we also are very impacted by the safety of Nakarney Road. Right now, our children have to cross that road in order to get to the school bus stop. Um, so now we have the Pine Ridge community, the Sea Forest neighborhood and this new development being landlocked with Nakarney Row as the only access point. So I agree that there hasn't been enough clarification on the connectivity of this new development to, um, either Meadows Lane or some other access route that will take people off of Nakarney Road and have access to the main points of downtown to do their shopping, um, to be able to bike. I think the provision of biking spaces without a safe route to bike anywhere is kind of a moot point. And we should really be concerned about how we're integrating this development, um, with the fabric of the city and the communities. Um, so those are my main points. So thank you for, um, the presentation and I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Emily, um, Michael Garner?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I am, uh, Michael Garner. I am a homeowner in Manzanita. And I want to congratulate the development team for their presentation and the planning commission for their consideration. I, uh, want to speak totally in favor of this development. I think it addresses a huge housing demand in Manzanita. And, um, I'm totally in favor of the presentation as it's presented. And I wanted to speak, giving my support for approval as it's presented with the exception to building height and the exception to the parking. I think it's very appropriate for the housing needs that Manzanita has right now. Thanks very much for my, for allowing my input.
Thanks, Michael. Uh, Kathy Silver?
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I live in the neighborhood. Uh, I'm just a couple houses away from Clipper Court. And I just had a question that someone, and I apologize that I don't remember exactly who said, uh, the fact that we would, there would just be like a peek-a-boo through of the trees, between the trees, a peek-a-boo to the building. And if you come onto Clipper Court and walk up the hill and stand, say, in the backyard of the Albreksons, the trees that are there are maybe at least forty years old. And those trees would be gone in order to build the buildings. And so the kind of trees you're talking about, I mean, I'll be dead before I ever get a peek-a-boo view of them. And so it's my personal feeling, just from standing there, using my imagination, all we're gonna see is that building. And when their lights are on, their lights will be on. And we're gonna see the car. We might see the headlights. Um, it's just not true that there, that we are barricaded from, from this development by the trees. And so I'm especially hoping you will continue to think of ideas. I like the idea of, of trading the buildings. That, uh, that's a good idea. Um, so that's it. Just how, how can you expect to be peeking through trees that are at the most ten feet tall? If you, you know, want to spend, spend a lot of money on them. And that's really all I have to say about that. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, Chair, Sarisa and Steve both have their hand raised again. I'll defer to you on taking additional comment.
If, oh, um, yeah, if the comment is different from what you've already said and, and can be brief, that would be great.
Okay, I think Sarisa actually her hand up longer. So we get Sarisa to come back.
Yes.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Kathy Miskinin. And what I would, I have a few questions. I sent in written, um, some written documents today through a land use planner. She sent them in for me. But, uh, my question is, is will somebody answer those questions that I have and send me a response? How does that work? Can you hear me? They can't hear me.
Yes, yes, we heard you.
Okay.
And, um, we will give the, um, developers an opportunity to respond to all of these questions in just a moment, once they're all. But we don't generally, um, write written responses.
Okay, so they answer the, I sent them in. Will somebody be reading them and then responding to them? That's my question.
Um, they're part of the record?
Okay.
Is it something that was published today?
I, they were sent in today. One of the things that I-
Mission, if they were sent in that late, so we take comment till noon and then send that to the commission and then it gets posted. So if you can be brief or succinct, you could repeat those questions here.
Well, one thing that I would like to have somebody check on is anybody, you guys don't have a solar zoning thing on your ordinance? You don't have a solar zoning?
We do not have a solar access, oh, no.
Okay. Have you checked? Has anybody checked to see what the state, um, solar rules apply to this? Does, is that part of the process?
The, the state does not have solar access rules for local jurisdictions. They set them up themselves. So I'm familiar with like the city of Ashland has one that was done in the eighties. So each, each local jurisdiction does their own solar access, uh, ordinance if they choose to. Uh, the city of Manzanita does not have one.
Okay, and that, one of the things that I wanted to know was what the median income was and how, cuz that's based on some of the low-income housing. And, um, then that would establish the rents. And also I have personally questions about if there's gonna be managers on site. And, um, the parking is too restrictive. You need more parking and there's no visiting parking for the, um, clubhouse. Also, um, a landscape buffer to the east that, um, will separate. What's the proposal for the landscape to the east that will separate what the, Manzanita pines from the adjacent residential areas? So many of these trees that looks are gonna have to be cut down. I mean, some of these trees are really old. They don't real big, but they're really, really old because they're growing in sand. How many of these trees are you guys saving? Am I done?
Is, if that's the end of your, your questions, yeah.
And I'd like to know how I can get ahold of you guys more easily in the city hall. That's one of my questions, too.
You can always send an email to us and we have open window hours from nine to noon, Monday through Thursday.
Nine to what?
To noon.
To noon, Monday through Friday?
It's Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, okay. Okay, please read my written comments. And also I would really appreciate it if everybody would look at Mr. Albrekson's video because it's very, very telling. Thank you.
You. Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Your video is, or your, your audio isn't on.
Sorry. So that date on the site says the meeting today was for June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Because the date was posted wrong, are the public comments, from what I gather, go on for another week? And the meeting isn't closed for another week because the date has been published wrong for the meeting date?
So Scott, I think you can probably-
You want me to address that? Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
And so the meeting, the public noticing was done, right? The, there was one place on the city's website where the date was incorrect, not everywhere, only in that one date. The mailings were all right. Everything else was right. So as a courtesy, we have discussed potentially leaving the public record open for an additional twenty days. So the idea would be that after the meeting, there would still be the ability for, uh, public comment to be received. Now, that's just a suggestion, that, that's, uh, something that, um, the commission can choose to do or not to ju, to do, uh, at the end of the meeting. But yes, Steve, I appreciate you pointing that out. That was something that we had discussed.
Yeah, and I do want to note, just Scott did mention that all the appropriate legal notices, et cetera, were all done correctly. It's this new thing that we offer. It's sort of an extra thing that we've, um, done over the last year, which is where we post the applications, um, when they're submitted on the city's website. And so there was a period of time that that date was incorrect, but it was posted correctly on the application. on the notices that went out and on the city's calendar as well. So that's a decision that can be made by the chair. And it didn't slow down any public comment, I will say. We've received a number of public comments, which we did share with the planning commission will be posted as part of the record.
How long is the hearing open? How long is this hearing open?
How long is its hearing open?
Um, that's, that depends. Chair, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that depends. If the, if the commission makes their decision tonight, then the hearing will be closed. If they elect to continue the hearing, it will be until the next hearing. We do have a hundred and twenty day requirement by state law to make a decision, including time for all the appeals. So that will be a discussion that needs to be had when the commission is ready to deliberate. So I'll defer to the chair.
Okay. At this point, let's, I'm assuming that's all the questions. Let us hear back from the property developers.
Emily also had, can we just please try to have some order, sorry? So Emily also had her hand raised. Chair, if you want to invite additional comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Yes, please.
Thank you. And I don't want to take anyone else's time. I just wanted to ask for the same clarification around. I'm a bit unclear. I know some of the other neighbors are around the affordable housing criteria. I've seen it written as sixty percent AMI and up to a hundred and twenty percent. Can we just receive clarification about what the AMI requirement is for this development?
Yes, absolutely. And I think the developer and those folks can speak to that, but it is sixty percent or below AMI.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then my other point was I would also advocate for the extension of the comment period because I know there was some confusion around an in-person meeting versus Zoom only. So I know that some folks were thinking that there was an in-person, so they may not have been able to prepare written comments. So I just wanted to add that I would advocate for an extension of the comment period. Thank you.
Yeah. And just so we know, we haven't met in person in almost five years. So that will be happening in the next nine months, but.
Well, okay, any other comments?
Presuming Sarisa and Steve have completed their comments, their hands are still raised, but I think we've heard them both twice. So again, I'll defer to the chair.
I would like to then invite the property developers to respond to the questions as many as they possibly can at this moment, so that we can get some clarity.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate time for rebuttal here to be able to give some comments amongst a myriad of questions. And I did my best to write down most of these, so I hope that is at least appreciated. If I did miss one or two, I think I've got the highlights. So how I like to do this, I just like to go methodically through in order some of the questions that we, we had here. So Sharice had quite a bit of them. I think it was seventeen. But I want to talk about, she's talked about precedent setting. And I think staff Scott Frigginoski gave a good point to, this is not precedent setting by use of PUD application, right? So if anyone were to ever come to you in the future for any of these adjustments that are allowed through a PUD process, it would be right back here at this decision-making body to be able to ask the same questions that you're having tonight for consideration before those get approved. She talked about the setbacks needing to be, not wanting to be adjusted next to their, against their east property line. And we aren't asking that. We're asking for front setbacks. I just want to be clear there. There was some comments about all the traffic cars, right? But it's a little bit counter to some of the comments that we've seen in previous requests that not wanting to have a lot of cars or, you know, what, what are the type of cars? How many cars are going to be coming onto this property that could affect neighbors? So I believe with a parking ratio of one point six, we're trying to really take a proactive approach to having less cars on here. However, by adding in some of the bicycle parking, that is not a required yet, requirement yet, but certainly through the TSP, the city is looking to that. It brings a good blend of vehicles as well as bicycles as well. The lighting, there are certain codes within the state of Oregon that allow you to make sure and ensure that there's not light trespass against property lines. And I believe we've already spoken, the presentation that we plan to have light shields on any light that we have for, in the parking area to make sure that those shielded. And we do plan to use the dark sky standards. I think that should eliminate that. Appreciate some of the concerns that she brought about the layout and on the north end. We are trying to make a blend of development and natural area. We are trying to show that there is a nice, large, natural area that many residents can go through and walk through and enjoy that. I know when I grew up as a child, getting among, getting through trees and everything was great. So that natural area is what that is, is meant for. And she talked about fire department and turnaround issues. We have worked with the fire department and that'll be more of a building code situation. We must, we must follow fire code. And the building department will, through their review, will be able to, to tell us when we are not. And further to, I think, some of my comments that some of the planning commissioners brought up, we do have a fire access turnaround at the north end. Water capacity will be decreased. So increased water capacity is another key function to this public-private partnership, right? The, the city was awarded over a million dollars to bring a new water line on the backs of this new affordable housing project coming. So I think water should not be a problem. There's much more capacity coming. Landscape maintenance and management of the property. Yes, there is an onsite manager. There is a partner that Home First works with to help manage the facilities, be there for residents and as well as making sure that the landscape maintenance is taken care of, all of the maintenance within the building is taken care of. And one thing not needed there is like snow removal, but it was one of my notes. So you never know. I, I think it did snow in Lincoln City recently, so. The AMI and who are these people that were going to be living there and what, what rates? I'm going to get to that. These are Tillamook County numbers. I think they asked, is this a Manzanita number or Tillamook County? The way the state does this through HCS is through the counties, right? So a sixty percent AMI puts a one-bedroom rent at nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, a, a two-bedroom rent at one thousand ninety-two dollars and a three-bedroom rent at one thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. Hopefully that gives more information there. Loop Road, where is Loop Road going, she's asked? So I believe it was pretty clear, and at least in our presentation, Loop Road will stop just north of the northern entrance into this development. Buses, the same fire turnaround will act as a bus turnaround. So buses will be able to come in there, have a bus stop. We can't promise that. We will definitely work with the school district to try and accommodate that with the children that would be living here. So they would use that same fire turnaround hammerhead style that the apparatus would be for fire departments. Affordable housing dispersed, I believe that there's a greater need than just sixty units within Manzanita. So this could be just the first of a few different ones. In this area, there could be future projects and requests that could add affordable housing in other areas of Manzanita. So although the sixty might be concentrated here, there will be other developments or could be other developments that might make more dispersment throughout the city. Smoking areas and pet areas, that is more up on the management. I don't think that's a criteria to go over today, but I appreciate the question. There will be a pet area and pet waste stations and certainly areas for those that, that smoke. And yes, manager onsite. So, huh, big breath there. I do appreciate all of her questions. They was, were very thought out and explained. Next, I'm going to go to Linda. Appreciate Linda's advocate, her advocacy for this project, even with the height. I think she nailed it with regards to the height, the comfortable and the deserving nature of that of market rates is something that we've been striving for. So I appreciate that comment. Emily, she had some safety concerns and connectivity. I want to make it clear that although it's not part of this project, I do know the property owner, the greater property owner is working collaboratively with the city to try and put a pedestrian and bike path that would go through their property onto Classic Street, which would allow a very safe way for folks in this area, as well as throughout the Highlands, to be able to get onto Classic Street and get downtown without having to go down to Carney. I hope that happens. I think that'll be a great benefit, not just for this project, but for many folks throughout Manzanita. Relocation, recreation for all ages. I completely agree. I think natural areas and the play areas. It's hard to build a, what we call totlot or a, a play structure for the upper teens. But I think just being in Manzanita and Coastal Town, there's a lot of fun things for them to do around there. I talked about the bike path access. So I think I've got those. And I appreciate Emily's support for this, you know, much needed affordable housing that she commented on as well. Michael, Michael said he's totally in favor as submitted and very appropriate. I appreciate Michael's time to be on here and making comments as well. So we had two Kathys. I'm going to go with Kathy S. first. She talks about the trees and how if we remove trees on our property, it would make a clear view from the properties on Clipper Court. There's, there looks to be anywhere from twenty to fifty feet from the property line. I'm, I'm guessing just by Google Earth, no AI-generated things, but just Google Earth that from the property line to, to those residents, and certainly Clipper Court is twenty fifty, if not a hundred feet. And, and we would not be taking down trees, of course, on our, outside of our property. So those, all thick, mature trees would, would still stay unless they chose to remove them. And then the second Kathy, I think she was sitting with Sharice. She was requesting response for some questions and I appreciate a chair and city manager asking her to read those out so we can offer that today and, and really get through this. Yeah, there is no solar zoning. I, I've developed in other cities that do require that and there is no state requirement for solar rules. So I just want to make sure that is understood as not a, a requirement, criteria today. The AMI rents, I also, I did give those AMI rents that she was asking for. And another question about the landscape plan east of building B. I believe we showed what might be considered there. And we are, you know, looking to enhance that area as much as we can. Again, we will not be taking any trees past our property line, which there is a great deal of mature trees past that property line as well. Oh, I think I've got them all, Chair, and I appreciate the opportunity for rebuttal and, and appreciate the, the previous discussions that we've had so far. We would ask and request that should the, the planning commission agree with this. We ask that a modification from the staffing, staff report allow for that additional three-foot height. And then we believe that we've met all the criteria to be approved and would like to close the record and, and request for an approval tonight. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Jerry, and just to clarify, probably for those watching, the city does have a dark sky ordinance. And so it'll have to be compliant with that. But if they're abiding by the dark sky rules kind of nationwide, it will, it will fit that bill. Otherwise, you did all the work. Thanks.
Sorry, just writing a note to myself. Um, all right, with that, I'd like to open the floor to the commission for discussion at this moment. I think if there are any clarifying questions that we need to ask, we can go ahead and do that. But at this point, we should close, generally close the conversation with public and move just to deliberations by the commission. So anyone have any particular thoughts? I'll just leave it wide open, just jump in.
Hey, I will.
Great.
I'm in favor of approving this project with the suggested modifications, including the extra three feet. My main reason for this is that more housing is imperative in our community as, as throughout the state and more affordable housing is even more imperative if that's possible. I'm one of those who's spoken in the past about it would be optimal to disperse affordable housing throughout the community. That is never going to happen. We are not going to get sixty units dispersed through Manzanita. This is an opportunity to do that. And the, the only substantial objection I could see so far is to the aesthetic consequences of the extra three feet on building B, which I don't think is, in my view, substantial enough to decline to approve this project. The rest of, I didn't hear any other objections to the, to other requested modifications. I'm a parking nut, so let me speak to that. This community, this nation, every project I've seen has been overparked. We, and to reduce this from two per unit to one point six is a step in the right direction of reducing our excessive use of parking spaces. And in particular for this project, it's not like the, the parking that is going to drift out into other areas like the, the neighborhood to the east. It's going to be contained within the development. So I don't see that as a, as a problem in itself. I'm done.
Thank you. Frank, you've got a hand up.
Yeah, Jerry, can you address the, are there going to be limits on three-bedroom apartments? Because one of the concerns from one of the public speakers was that you could possibly have six to eight people. Are there limits based on, you know, when people rent? Or will there be?
City's perspective, we can't limit that, but I would like to hear if Jerry has any thoughts on that.
I would have to ask Ben for the limits, but I can give you what is designed today. Designed today, we have fourteen one-bedrooms, twenty-three two-bedrooms and twenty-three three-bedrooms. So that is, that is the plan here. And that would meet the density requirement, right?
Oh, I understand that, Jerry. No, I understand that. There, there's just, with, with some places when you go to rent apartments, you are limited, even if it's a three-bedroom, you can't just have twenty people living in a three-bedroom apartment. There are lease limitations.
There will be, yeah, I appreciate the, the question concern, Frank. There will be, this will be professionally managed, just like any apartment community would be. We'll follow all fair housing rules. I believe that's two residents per bedroom is the federal standard. I'm not an asset manager. So in a three-bedroom, that would be a maximum of, of six. But I, I would have to defer to our property management company for that.
Okay, otherwise, I, I, I agree with a lot of what Tom said, considering the parking as well. It's over, you know, we build so many parking spaces that go unused and are so unnecessary. And whether or not three feet are going to make a difference, I fully understand that nobody wants their neighborhood to change. Nobody wants the city to change. Nobody wants their street to change. But change is inevitable. It's something that we have to deal with and we have to manage. There's, there's nothing you can do about that. This is not Manzanita nineteen seventy-five. This is Manzanita twenty twenty-five and going forward. And this addresses a huge fundamental issue, not only in this area, but throughout the state of Oregon. We're thirty thousand or more houses short than what we need throughout the state. And where are they going to be built? Where are these people going to live? Where, where can people go that are affordable? Even listening to the rates that Jerry rattled off, those are considered affordable housing. But even at that, that's going to eliminate a lot of people that can't afford that amount of money. So we have got to do something. And whether or not three feet, you can't, you wouldn't even be able to notice three feet on that building once that thing is built. Thirty-four point two inches or thirty-seven point two, that, that's, that to me is a no-brainer. That's a non-issue. The issue of nine-foot ceilings, that's almost mandatory. Going back to what Lee said, that you could do something because you have to or do something because you want to. Well, then make them shorter if you, if, if you don't have to. I mean, there's, there's certain standards that we live by in today's world. And nine foot ceilings are not gonna blow the roof off of the, you know, the entire project. Uh, I think that's a gracious thing to have for somebody that's gonna live in those apartments and I'll leave it at that.
Thanks Karen. So everybody knows where I stand on the building height thing. But that said, I want to emphasize my complete support for the project. For the concept involved in the project, what it brings to the community. What it provides to our workforce who has no other place to live right now. Uh, without traveling a significant distance every day. Uh, I completely agree with the parking um, aspect. I ran the numbers on that and it actually works out to one space per one bedroom unit. And two spaces each for the two and three bedroom units, which makes perfect sense. Um, there may be times that those are exceeded. Uh, we had a little bit of discussion earlier about the. Parking on the shoulders of the road. The road is designed, as I recall, for a twenty foot width, which is kind of a minimum paved. Road or street. Um, depending on the way that the sub bed is laid down, that may or may not provide a lot of parking spaces. Um, reduce setbacks, front yard, no problem at all. Uh, again, the way that's designed, that's toward the, uh, toward the roadway. I did visit the site a couple of times and. I was kind of struck by the. Um, distances from where the road is gonna come in, where Loop Road is gonna come into Nakarni. It's not too bad looking to the east. That's a fairly substantial piece of asphalt there, if you will. But looking to the west, there's a hill between. The entrance to Pine Ridge and where Loop Road is gonna come on in Nakarni. And as I recall, the TIA, I think they referenced uh, two hundred and eighty feet. And if it's two hundred and eighty feet, I, my, my measurements, my internal measurements are awry. But I, I just have a concern about people coming over the hill. And that's obviously the, the area of traffic that would be turning to the east. So they have to cross the lane and get out there and. Speed limits are great. Speed limits are gonna help control that. But as we all know, our speed limits are enforced by. A very competent and yet small police force. So I would just suggest that uh, the TIA go back and carefully look at that, revisit that and make sure that those numbers are accurate. I'm sure Scott can uh, uh, pursue that. But overall, I'm, I'm really pleased with the project and Jerry and, and his team have done a terrific job of. Sharing with us the vision that they have and uh, I hope that they garner support from the entire community. Thank you.
Um, Lee, for the record, I'm not sure where you are on the building height um, request.
Well, I'm not gonna hold this project up if everybody else is in favor of it. I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna deny the project. I, I'm not gonna change my view. My view is that. If it can be done without nine foot ceiling heights, then that should be a, a, a consideration for the, for the commission. Um, again, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting in a, I'm sitting in a beautiful home right now with eight foot ceilings. I don't feel compressed. Or. Out of sorts, so.
So are, are you talking about throughout the whole project or are you concerned mostly about the Bill- Building B?
The buildings that exceed the thirty-four foot, two inch overall height. Based on the fact that they have nine foot ceilings. I'm not, I'm not opposed to having nine foot ceilings. That's great. But when it impacts the uh, the twenty percent extra given by the Senate bill. Uh, in other words, going from thirty-four two to thirty-seven two, I just, I don't see the need for it.
Thanks, that's, that's clear. Uh, let's see, who's next? Uh, John, how about you?
Sure. Um, first of all. Let me say to the development team, uh, Jerry and your team, uh, Keith, Ben, Skylar. I, I like the project. Um, you've done a good job with what you have to work with. I, I know finances are a constraint on a project like this and. You are doing things above and beyond. Um, and I appreciate that. I, I think everybody thinks they know where I stand on the height limit, but that's not necessarily true. I, if you can give these people nine foot ceilings, um, hallelujah. It requires us to raise our height limit by three feet. Which, other than a few houses, uh, other than the east end of Building B is irrelevant. Um, it's not gonna matter at all to Building E and uh. Building C, i- it's minimal. Um, I like the, I like the. Scale down toward the middle of the project. It all works really well. Materials are good. And I will go full nerd and quote Spock, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. I'd bite the bullet and grant the three feet because I believe um. Our target deserves that. Um. As far as, let's see, the building setbacks, again, uh, I kind of agree with, with Lee, it's, or whoever said. You know, it's, it's on the west side, it's along Loop Road. Hallelujah. Yeah, on Building E, you go from thirty feet to ten feet, so you probably average twenty. Uh, and on Building C, i- it's forty feet. Um, of building, it's not the end of the world and you need it to make. You, you really do kind of need it to make the project work, cause if we have to push you back there, it, it throws Building B even closer to the. Neighbors. And what was the, there's a, three things that we had to, uh, what was the third one?
The parking.
Oh, parking, absolutely. I'm, I'm completely on board with the parking. I agree with the. I, I agree with the. Everybody, I agree with Tom, I agree with Frank. Um, we have been with a few exceptions and. Bert can probably tell you the exact building type that never has enough parking, but. Most building types are way overparked in this country. Um, so one point six, I'm in favor of. At ease. That's smoke them if you got them. I'm, I'm done.
Okay, Brad, you've had your hand up for a while.
I want to um, acknowledge, I think there's some interesting and some um, valued. Community feedback. Uh, in fact, one that I think I reread three or four times this afternoon from. And I'll probably not pronounce the name correctly, but from Emily. In particular, um, I do have a question and then I'll get to my um, point of view on some of these. But I think the question about connectivity, I would love to see addressed, even if it's outside of. Of this um, particular. Planning Commission meeting, cause I think the overall. Site and how it fits in with the overall. Twelve to seventy plus acres and the connectivity back to town, I think. Uh, may inform the, the long-term success of this development. And I also want to just share, there's a couple of other comments that I think will inform the success and I, I'd be curious downstream. Um, a little bit more information on the overall sitescape, landscape, hardscape and materiality of this project. But be that as it may, I'm gonna conclude with a, an aphorism and say that um. Perfection is the enemy of good. And I think this project, the good that this project brings to the city of Manzanita. And beyond far outweighs some of the, the challenges that the site may present. And I'm in support of um, everything that was presented, including the reduction in parking, including the additional height.
Thank you. What are your thoughts?
Are you asking me?
Sorry.
Yeah, hey, I, I, you know, I have done affordable housing and I know how hard it is to. Make a project successful. And uh, you know, the constraints of cost are significant. Uh, and every move has to be taken into account. In how to create a better overall project and, and experience for the people who will live there. Uh, it's, it's a, a site that has constraints, like all sites do. And I think the site plan is a really good site plan. You know, it minimizes the amount of paving. It's effective in its circulation. Uh, uh, some good comments, uh, you know, about, well, how are people gonna move through the site? I think it's a really well-done site plan and uh, you know, it creates a heart. At the center of the site plan and an open space and a community center that will be natural for people to go to. And it'll be sunny, you know, when the sun's around. Uh, it's a facing west and it's got good southern exposure and uh. A lot of good stuff about how the team has uh, uh, gone through and, and worked the site. Uh, I think that uh, uh, the, the extra height I'm totally supportive of. Uh, I think that that's personally something that needs to be addressed citywide in a careful lens, obviously. But uh, you know, to have that experience is important. Uh, to not uh, uh, be unequal in terms of uh, how people live. So I'm definitely supportive of that. I think the setback is fine. You know, they did their, their work. They pushed Building B further to the west as, as much as they could. Uh, and I think relief uh, at the street is just okay. So uh, I think we will all be very proud of this project. Uh, not only the way it looks and feels, but what it's gonna contribute. To the nature of our community. And uh, the ability for uh, employers to find good staff. The ability for kids to be part of Manzanita. Uh, I think all those things are really important and this project will contribute to that. I do uh, hope that as we move forward with additional uh. Uh, commission submittals, that we do have clear uh, context. And a clear uh, connectivity. And I think that's a, a question that we have. And so uh, I would suggest that uh, uh, as we look at future submittals. That we uh, remember the important comments about uh, safety. About walkability, about bikeability and uh, make sure that those future submittals uh, contribute to this fabric. Uh, that we're looking for in our city. It also raises uh, obviously a substantial question about Nakarni. Uh, that's been raised before, uh, including uh, with the uh, park uh, uh, changes. Uh, that I think as a community, we really need to work in partnership with the county to try to get to uh, that road uh, solved somehow. So I've been supportive of this. Uh, I know it's hard uh, for some folks. Uh, but uh, I think the team's done a really uh, admirable job in uh, solving a very challenging. Uh, uh, problem we have uh, for our community.
Um, Frank, you have the hand raised. Do you, do you have more you wanted to say?
Just a real quick comment, sort of off topic, but I wanted to be the first to go on record of changing the name from Loop. To my suggestion is Legacy, which is a tribute to hardworking families lasting impact. I think that would be a good name. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, um, my comments, just to kind of build on everybody. I don't know how big of a difference three feet will make. I really, it, it's hard for me to visualize. And I wish that the video um, that one of the, our neighbors made um, had been submitted early enough that we could have. Um, seen it beforehand, because that might help inform um. My thinking on this. Um, I'm, I also agree, I think for, with everybody that um, the, the front yard setback. Is meaningless pretty much um, as far as the site plan goes. I was a little concerned that the side yard setback. Was only, only be eight feet. Um, but I'm convinced now that that's the rear yard setback and that it's adequate. Um, in fact, it might even be a little bit more than the code requires, so I'm, I'm happy about that. Uh, the parking, I think um. You know, I've been a big proponent of having plenty of parking off-street everywhere in town for years. Because parking on-street is a problem with our narrow roads. But I also am uh, evolving my thinking on that. Um, to say that I think we are overparked in a lot of ways, especially in a big development. And this parking area looks like. Um, it's more thoughtful and should be, have plenty of room for maneuvering that many cars in and out. Um, some of the other parking situations that we've approved in previous applications. You know, we've, we've let people get away with way too small of lanes and not lo- you know, not large enough parking spaces. And um, I'm glad to see that, that this one isn't asking for additional reductions in parking space size or maneuvering room. That it, it actually looks like it's going to be a workable lot. So I think one point six vehicles. Uh, parking spaces per unit is gonna be just fine. I, I, I would like to say that. If it's possible to do Building B at, without the additional three feet. As a nod to the neighbors and the um, impact it's going to have on them. But I think, Bert, you've kind of convinced me that, you know, equality or equity should be equity for everyone. And um, so I, I think I'm not gonna fight too hard on that. If, if anybody else wants to back me up and, and, you know, move Building B to just the thirty. What is it, the thirty-three, thirty-two feet, two inches um, instead of thirty-seven? Um, you know, I would go along, I, you know, I would go along with that, but I'm not gonna um, buck, buck the rest of the trend and try to hold this up. Um, for that, because I think that it will be beneficial overall to the community and I think it's a thoughtful plan. I do like the way the um, buildings are stepped from the center outward. I think that's gonna make a much more um, interesting and uh. Comfortable environment for people to move around in. So that said, um. We are pretty much all in agreement. I see Lee's got his hand up if he's gonna argue with me about this, but we're pretty much in agreement. And so with whatever comment you have to say, Lee, um, I would call for a motion after you.
Um, I, I just have a procedural question. I believe if I read uh, the PUD requirements that we meet one more time on this. Before it goes to council, is that correct?
If I remember right, we're approving today a preliminary plat. And that the, when the final plat comes back, we'll review it and ensure that it. Uh, substantially conforms and then that goes to the city. Is that correct? Scott, you wait. Your head, okay. And then the final, the two-year countdown um, on the. And that you recommended is after the approval of the final plat, is that correct?
But, excuse me, the what countdown?
Uh, the two-year.
Yes, yes, correct.
It's, it's on the final plat.
Yes.
Additional question or comment?
And there's a, just, there's a year, you have to get this final plat within a year. Between the approval of the preliminary plat, but that shouldn't be a problem.
between the approval of the preliminary plat, but that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. And, and the rest of the engineering issues will be sorted out between preliminary and final plat, correct?
Yes, there's a whole.
Water drainage and all of that kind of stuff.
And, and a bunch of the conditions that are recommended in the staff report.
Okay. Okay, Tom?
As, as I understand, under the SRR zone, the open space needs to be deeded to the city, dedicated to the city somehow? Isn't that required as part of this?
I, I don't think so.
The open space shall be so indicated on the plan and zoning map and deed restrictions to that effect shall be filed with the city.
Yeah, deed restrictions. So that was another reason why that was complicated is that it needs to be, it can't be developed in the future. That's what the deed restriction says. So this is open space in perpetuity is what it says.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at. I, I didn't know whether we needed to make that a condition of this approval or not. Or is that just, as a matter, it happens as a matter of course?
Yes, we don't, we don't need to make it a condition, but thank you for checking, Tom.
Okay, uh, with that then, I would move that we approve the application with the findings and conditions detailed in the staff report.
Um, go ahead, John.
Staff report indicate the three feet additional. Are you nodding yes, Scott or?
Yes, it does. The staff report does. It's one of those three things that, that, that was one of the decisions was the staff.
I don't believe the staff report does have that.
It doesn't. So you would move to approve the staff report with the condition that
That's what I think.
Setbacks and the parking are all approved and then the staff will write an updated set of findings that the chair will review and then sign. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. It's the, we, yeah, it's a decision you need to make, but the recommendation is in the staff report. Thank you.
Yeah.
The recommendation is that the building height maximum is thirty-four feet, two inches and you we would want to change that to thirty-seven feet, two inches. Is that correct?
That's correct.
As part of our motion.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I thought that was included. So I amend my motion to read that way.
Read, read that way. Okay, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it, uh, with it reading that way.
Okay.
Read that way, right.
And we're clear on what read that way means, is it?
Yes, setbacks, height and parking are approved as in the staff report, all three.
Okay.
We got you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Well, I think, I think the height we're saying is thirty-seven point two feet.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
That's way.
That, that's that, that change in the staff report. Okay.
Can I add one additional condition was the review of the transportation, uh, the, the traffic impact study? If you can add to the motion that we need to include the conditions that were from the city engineer that were required as part of the review of the traffic impact study.
Um, is that already in your recommendation under item C?
It is. It's on, it's in the staff report.
Okay. So we would be?
It's the three items plus the, uh, transportation engineer recommendations based on the impact study.
Okay.
Thanks for remembering that.
Got it. Uh.
Somebody want to read that back?
You want to take a stab at it?
I don't.
Okay. Maybe the motion would be to, um, approve the staff report as submitted and adopt the conditions stated therein. Except that item A three, um, will read the maximum building height for any structures will be thirty-seven feet, two inches. And the rest of the recommendations include the, um, transportation. Um, the site dis- site distances at Loop Road and that no structure will be occupied until Loop Road is platted and dedicated to the public.
Perfect.
Since the chair can't make her own motions, I will move that what she just said, uh, that's my motion. So it, it's, the recommendations are on page sixteen with a change in the maximum building height in paragraph A three from thirty-four feet, two inches to thirty-seven feet, two inches. So approve the, the application with those conditions and the findings in the report preceded. That's my motion. And I'm not going to lag in.
And, and is that motion reseconded?
I'll second.
Okay.
What he said.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion as stated? Raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
This looks like it's unanimous. Okay, great. Um, thank you, everyone, for your thoughtful input, thoughtful concerns. I hope, um, that we all enjoy this property for a very long time, but, but works great.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Yep, and we had no other business on our agenda, so at seven eighteen.
Can I jump in real quick?
Please.
We need to close the hearing and, um, keep the public record open for twenty days. Right? Do we not close the hearing, Leila?
I think you're closing the hearing and the record is also closed. I think that's what I heard the commission say. Is that, am I stating that correctly?
Well, I'll make it clear. I moved that we close the hearing and, and the record.
The email says that you keep it over for twenty days based on the false statements.
The decision of the commission and that that all of the notices and documents required for this were correct. So it was just one spot on the city's website that was just a recent addition to the city's website. So well, we apologize for that. There's actually no procedural error in that. And we said we would request or recommend that the record remain open and it was decision of this body to not do so.
Is that the decision of this body?
Yes.
Leave the record open or the decision's been made, but we'll accept comments or another five days? I mean, I don't know.
I will note that we will share everything we received. We always take comment through the close of the hearing. So anything that came in since noon will be shared and posted.
Yeah, and I will
Your decision.
I will read everything.
Either way.
I'll read everything additional that comes in. That's, that's in as of today, so. Okay, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So we all want to say.
We don't need a second for that. All right. Thank you, everybody. See you next month.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, everybody.